Appreciate you, my brother. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you, brother. Appreciate y'all. I appreciate y'all. I appreciate you. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All right, carrying on with our meeting. We will be looking to go into a public hearing, the shallow draft navigational dredging assessments. Lacy, you want to go ahead and have a floor and explain a little bit up front before you go any further?
Thank you, Mayor. In advance of starting the public hearing, the council has requested that I provide a brief history of the dredging project that has brought us to this point. The town actually started talking about this dredging project in 2012. I won't bore you with all those prior year details, but if you'd ever like to hear about it or read about it, you can come to Town Hall and I'll be glad to speak with you about it. I'm going to start with the first thing that really got the ball rolling. In September of 2020, the town council approved the preliminary assessment resolution informing the public that the council was considering a dredging project, the intended areas to be dredged, the percentage of the total cost to be assessed upon the benefited property owners, the basis for making special assessment, the assessment payment method, and scheduling a public hearing to hear comments regarding the project. The public hearing was held on November the 7th, 2020. During the hearing, the public provided comments on the dredging project being considered and the conditions outlined in that resolution. In January 2021, the town council approved a resolution directing that the dredging project be undertaken with the stated conditions that were in the preliminary assessment resolution remaining with the exception of reducing the payment method interest rate from 8% to 3%. The dredging project was partially funded with matching grants obtained from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. The first grant included a two-thirds state funding and one-third town funding, and the second grant included three-fourth state funding and one-fourth town funding. The grants and the permit requirements included no dredging within five feet of a dock or 10 feet of any marsh grass. The permitted agencies directed that the dredge use a scope method, not a box cut method. The town was also required to perform a shell relocation project due to the abundance of oysters in the Finger Canals and Turtle Creek. The entrance to Turtle Creek was narrowed due to the extension of the oyster bed in that area. I finished as the troop commander over Troop B, which is headquartered out of Fayetteville, but encompasses Brunswick County. And so anytime I got a chance to get out of Fayetteville and get to Sunset Beach, it was a good day. And so this is another really, really good day. So today, it truly is my honor to be here representing FBI LITA and to present the FBI LITA Agency Trilogy Award to the Sunset Beach Police Department. The Agency Trilogy Award is a very distinguished accomplishment. FBI LITA presents the Law Enforcement Agency Trilogy across the country to those agencies whose command staffs have completed the FBI LITA Trilogy Leadership Series with FBI LITA. And so that series is made up of three classes, a supervisor leadership class, a command leadership class, and an executive leadership class. And those three one-week classes have been completed by all the members of the command staff of the Sunset Beach Police Department. And so we've got five sergeants and assistant chief and a chief that are standing here before you today. And I'd like to give them a round of applause for that. To tell you what kind of an honor it is for them to have accomplished this, first of all, they spent three weeks apiece in classes listening to guys like me, which is brutal in and of itself. But they are the ninth agency in the state of North Carolina, only the ninth out of 504 agencies in the state that have received this award. They're the 189th agency in the country to receive this award, out of thousands of law enforcement agencies. So it's pretty impressive that they've done that. Today, I'm pleased to present to the Sunset Beach Police Department the FBI LITA Agency Trilogy Award. Congratulations to all of you, thank you.
You guys don't get it, huh? Congratulations, gentlemen, congratulations.
Congratulations.
There you go. Congratulations, congratulations. Sure you want us to be?
Step on around, our guy.
Go around front.
Y'all come on.
Ken, Ken, he wants us behind you now, or he wants us to get out of the way?
We can, we can bail. We can bail.
We can bail.
You don't want to ruin the picture.
You stay there.
Well, you don't want to ruin the picture.
You're good, you're good.
Appreciate you, brother. Appreciate you, my brother. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you, brother. Appreciate y'all. I appreciate you. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All right, carrying on with our meeting. We will be looking to go into a public hearing, the shallow draft navigational dredging assessments. Lisa, you want to go ahead and have the floor and explain a little bit up front before you go any further? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. In advance of starting the public hearing, the council has requested that I provide a brief history of the dredging project that has brought us to this point. The town actually started talking about this dredging project in 2012. I won't bore you with all those prior year details, but if you'd ever like to hear about it or read about it, you can come to Town Hall and I'll be glad to speak with you about it. I'm going to start with the first thing that really got the ball rolling. In September of 2020, the town council approved the preliminary assessment resolution, informing the public that the council was considering a dredging project, the intended areas to be dredged, the percentage of the total cost to be assessed upon the benefited property owners, the basis for making special assessment, the assessment payment method, and scheduling a public hearing to hear comments regarding the project. The public hearing was held on November the 7th, 2020. During the hearing, the public provided comments on the dredging project being considered and the conditions outlined in that resolution. In January 2021, the town council approved a resolution directing that the dredging project be undertaken with the stated conditions that were in the preliminary assessment resolution remaining with the exception of reducing the payment method interest rate from 8% to 3%. The dredging project was partially funded with matching grants obtained from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. The first grant included a two-thirds state funding and one-third town funding. And the second grant included three-fourth state funding and one-fourth town funding. The grants and the permit requirements included no dredging within five feet of a dock or 10 feet of any marsh grass. The permitted agencies directed that the dredge use a scope method, not a box cut method. The town was also required to perform a shell relocation project due to the abundance of oysters in the Finger Canals and Turtle Creek. The entrance to Turtle Creek was narrowed due to the extension of the oyster bed in that area. The dredging project was engineered and designed to meet all state requirements. Initially, the project was only permitted to a depth of minus two feet mean low water. But the town applied for and received a variance from the Coastal Resources Commission to permit a dredge depth to minus five feet mean low water. Pre-dredging surveys and post-dredging as-built surveys were required to determine that the project stayed within the permitted width and depth and to ensure that the materials removed equaled the amounts charged. All of the surveys were submitted and discussed with the permitting agencies pre and post-project. The dredging project included the navigational waters of South Jinks Creek, the Bay Area, the feeder channel, the Four Finger Canals, and Mary's and Turtle Creeks on the mainland. The project occurred between November 2021 and completed in March of 2024 with a moratorium stop between April 1st and November 16th each year. In February 2025, the council approved the resolution declaring the total project cost, directing the preparation of the resolution preliminary assessment role, I'm sorry, scheduling the public hearing, and ordering the notices be mailed to the benefited property owners. The preliminary assessment role consists of 321 affected property owners. This includes the town, which is the affected property owner of the Sunset Beach Town Park and the Majestic Oak Park. Several properties planned to be included in the project were removed due to marsh grass growth and the owners of those properties have been deleted from the role. Details of the dredging projects are on the town website. Under the Government Town Project section, go to the Shallow Draft Navigational Dredge Project for current documentation and to the Town Archives under Shallow Draft Navigation dredging project for the full project documents. Purpose of this public hearing is for the council to hear objections to the preliminary assessment role. Mayor?
All right, everybody has their explanation that they've given now. So do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion before we go in? All right, now the floor is open, anybody that would like to speak to this, well, because welcome to come to the mic. Please state your name, your address, and they make me run this clock on you. So when it gets to three minutes, I'll have to tell you to stop, but I'll try to get you notation where you can get your speech in.
Very good, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. My name is Ignacio Marino, I reside at 802 Riverside Drive. I have concerns regarding the completed dredging and the proposed special assessment to homeowners. This assessment states that the project was for navigational operational ability in the waterways. The process I observed seemed unorthodox and inconsistent in the application, not to mention inefficient. They used multiple backhoes in a redundant repetitive manner that lacked consistency. The depth of penetration, meaning the bucket reach, was not equal, in my opinion, due to the tide levels during which they were operating. Furthermore, I never observed that the operators were monitoring in real time the depth that they were reaching. This has resulted, in my opinion, in canal navigational depth apparently being up to two feet in various spots as I navigated out. Jinks Creek remains largely non-navigational anytime near low tide. There remains multiple hazards for running underground, whether on a motorboat or on a kayak. Then, to add insult to injury, we are subjected to a proposed assessment irrespective of the lineal feet or the amount of work time spent near our property. In fact, the proposal appears to adversely penalize small lot owners through application of a per parcel assessment rather than by lineal feet. Large lot owners therefore benefiting at the expense of a typical 50-foot lot owner. Can the council explain how the determination was made that a property owner with 50 feet of navigational waterway frontage is just as responsible from a assessment perspective as waterway properties that are hundreds of feet? Allah, some of Mary's Creek, including the town's parcel, which, looking at the property tax rolls, appears to have over 500 feet of bulkhead and other properties along there that have substantial sizes in lineal feet. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. While you're getting there, let me just tell the chief something. Go ahead if you will, and check back there and say who, let the chief do it, Lee. Go back there and go ahead and tell them people, be prepared, and that way we can keep people flowing where everybody gets to speak. Go ahead, sir, thanks, sorry.
My name is Ed Huggins, we have the house at 431 Sixth Street. Our family's on the beach house at 431 Sixth Street. Since my dad had it built in 1969, it's been around for a long time. We were expecting the dredging project to deepen the canal so that our dock would be able to float at all tides. And it would still, and it would still open the end of the canal to a more safer and better boating area. But it appears that the dredging did not deepen the canal for our property and that the dredging occurred at just a few feet in the middle of the canal at our end. And the pictures will show some of that. Our property is located at the end, toward the end of Canal A, where the dredging was not extended. As a result, it provided minimum to no improvement for our property. And it appears that the dredge is beginning to fill back up. There is a groundwater drainage pipe, there are two drainage pipes at that end of the canal, dumping straight into the canal. The drainage pipe dumps water, sand grit, and road debris into the canal. Due to this drainage from the roads, the canal and the property owners are left with a sandy water and encreek muck after every rain. I believe that a properly dredged canal benefits the property owners and the town of Sunset by reducing the probabilities of excessive storm damage and flooding during storms and hurricanes. Our end of the canal does not meet that benefit. It also appears that the town council has evaluated some properties as receiving no benefits from the dredging and therefore has assessed no dredging charges for those properties. I agree with that approach, as recognized diminished returns of the project depending on the location. The town council should reduce the assessment charges for properties not receiving the same value or benefit from the dredging project. I therefore request a greatly adjusted and reduced assessment for our property at 431 Sixth Street. And thank you for the opportunity of speaking to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for the picture showing exactly what you just said. Go ahead, sir. Yes, sir. Next, I'll get you, we'll try to rotate so we can get everybody in here, okay? Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Ron Smith, I reside at 411 Sixth Street. I want to begin by thanking the members of the council who supported the dredging project and ensured its completion. As we mentioned earlier, this project was initiated over 10 years ago when then-Major Ron Watts recognized the need and took action. So I especially want to thank those members who have been a part of this project from nearly the beginning and have worked to overcome the unnecessary obstructions by outside groups that caused delays and in many ways derailed this project from its original objection objectives. I imagine that in some respects, the dredging project could be considered a success. However, from the perspective of canal property owner and resident, I see it as a failure. The original briefing presented by Moffett Nichols indicated the canals would be dredged coincide with the previous dredging that was conducted over 20 years ago. That was a project that all canal property owners supported and thought would happen. However, for many reasons, this did not occur. Primarily, I believe, because we were denied usage of the disposal sites that are required for pipe dredging, the canal material. Failure to pursue all avenues to overcome this denial led to mechanical dredging, which resulted in less dredging material pulled out and drove up the cost and also damaged the island infrastructure. Mechanical dredging of a 20-foot wide ditch in the canal does nothing for property owners who are unable to utilize their docks because they sit in the mud 50% of the time. In fact, instead of providing navigational access as indicated in the permit, this type of dredging forces property owners to extend their docks out to the maximum distance allowed and prevents access to the canals when docks on opposite sides have boats moored. There will be no space for a dock to pass, I mean for a boat to pass through, not even a kayak. As I mentioned earlier, mechanical dredging these man-made canals wastes money and damages our roads. In fact, when I spoke with the dredge operator, who I consider a reliable source of information, he indicated the canals would fill back in in the next three to five years because they were not cleaned out properly. I wonder if the council has discussed dredging the canals again in the next five years and if the properties will then again be assessed another $7,000 or $8,000 for the dredging that does not benefit them. If history is any indication of the future, the mismanagement of our canals will ensure their failure and they will surely become filled with mud and weeds. My family's been on Sunset Beach since 1958. I don't want to tell my grandson, the sixth generation of my family, to grow up here that the canals will not be here when he gets older. So what is the way ahead? I would not stand before you here today and just complain without recommending a solution. Let me first say that I'm not opposed to an assessment, although I believe the town should contribute to the cost of dredging since these are public waters enjoyed by everyone and only enhance the beauty and attractiveness of our town. What I am opposed to is this assessment paying for a failed project that did not deliver on the expectations of property owners. And I would ask just a few more seconds.
I'll give you a few more seconds, and if you'll leave whatever you got with Ms. Kimberly, I'll make sure she sends it to the council.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Instead, the town should place this assessment money into reserve, establish the dredging district as promised, and petition the state to pipe dredge these canals in the next three to five years in accordance with the parameters that they were dredged 20 years ago. We should not let state agencies prevent our town from cleaning out man-made canals. If state agencies prevent a suitable dredging project, then the council should get our elected representatives to intervene to move a property dredging project forward. If necessary, we could establish a new disposal area specifically designed for canal dredging to ensure we always have a site for these projects. If the council does not clean out the canals properly, they are sending a clear message to all town property owners that they are not concerned about property values nor the beauty of our unique beach. I respectfully request the council to not place the burden of a failed project on the backs of canal property owners and to take actions now to ensure these waters remain viable for future generations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like I said, if you've got anything else, you can leave it with her, she'll make sure she gets it to the council. So, thank you.
My name is Art Ingram, I'm at 1705 Canal. I've had, I've been a property owner and taxpayer since 1981, so 40, 44 years here at Sunset Beach. I am on the bay, on waterfront. And I got this notice, we've been following this closely. I had a few questions just based on the notice. One was that the project has been declared completed. So I kind of echo what was said before, I'm not sure we have completed the project as it was intended to be done. So that was one question, is it really fully done? Another question, another point was that this was a preliminary assessment. Does this mean that this is a hard number or you've got more dollars to assess? Or are we final with this assessment? And pointing out that this assessment looks like it was considerably higher than it was originally. The property owners are being to pay their proportional share. I'd like to understand what proportional means. And I think the earlier comments about a smaller lot versus a parcel that's a bigger lot is well taken. So how do you do those calculations? I noticed, I've heard that Ocean Isle does their canal dredging regularly. And I don't know quite how they accomplish it, but I don't think the property owners necessarily, waterfront property owners all absorb the total cost of that, that sort of dredging activity. From my perspective, when I look out, my dock still sits on the, sits on the mud at low tide. And the only boat that I own, by the way, is a 10-foot water tender that I row. So it's a two-inch draft, so I don't have to worry too much about two feet versus five feet. But I enjoy going out in the water. But everybody that owns a boat, that's a resident of Sunset Beach or otherwise, navigates those waters. So somehow, the population of people that pay for this dredging project somehow should be looked at as users. I know when we did the city park, everybody absorbed the cost for something that was enjoyed by everybody. I think that waterway is enjoyed by everybody. So how we singled out just property owners on the water in the name of increased property value seems rather selective. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, come on up.
Counsel? My name is Jerry Burns, I live at 432 Marlin Street. And tonight, I'm here on behalf of my neighbors who are out of state right now and they could not attend this very important meeting. So I'd like to read their prepared statement, if that's okay with the board?
Yes, sir.
The owners of the house, which is 430 Marlin Street, which is, as you turn from Canal onto Marlin, is the second house on the left. The owners is Alicia Stemper and Lydia Lovell. They've owned the house since 19, assuming 2017. And the house was listed as an adjacent to a riparian property in the original KAMA major permit application of December 18th. They were in favor of the dredging because of their dock that sits on the Muckey Canal, bottomed for several hours before, and before, and low tide, both sides of low tide, adjacent to the marsh. We hope the dredge would remove enough material to allow far more water flowing in the canal, providing needed benefit to all of us, allowing our docks to remain afloat. Yes, I can. However, during the process, we noticed the dredging in our canal stopped before reaching our dock. Now the dredging is complete and our docks still look, still sits on the ground as much as before. We researched and found the Moffett and Nichol proposed KAMA major modification request on July 25th of '23 to modify the dredge footprint. We are including the technical language as a footnote, which you see on the bottom, to this next comment. But essentially, but essentially, a marsh grass survey conducted of '21 revealed that the saltwater marsh grass in the Finger Canals had grown to the point where it encroached on the anticipated dredged area. The modification request sought to minimize impacts to the grass by maintaining a 10-foot buffer off of any marsh grass and prohibiting dredging equipment from entering the marsh grass buffer zone. This modification was approved as a result, reduced the dredging area from the canals by two acres. I'll repeat that, reduced the dredging area from the Finger Canals by two acres. Of note, this is a Finger Canal A, which is the canal in between Marlin and Sixth Street. When passing the resolution to finance this project by special assessment, the council stated that the costs should be, hereafter, assessed upon the benefit of the property owners. However, because of the reduced scope of the dredging project, dredging did not occur back of our house and thus, we did not benefit or our property benefit at all. Our dock is still sitting squarely on the mud. At this hearing, the council has the authority to annul the assessment in whole or in part or to cancel the assessment, as it may be proper in compliance with the basis of the assessment being benefit to all family owners. We believe it is proper that our property is not subject to the dredging assessment because we totally did not benefit from it.
So, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, come on up.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak here today. My name is Joe Cantoni and I live at 708 Riverside Drive. I think the opening lines mentioned that the benefit party shall be apportioned the costs of the canal work. Logic dictates that there are economic, recreational- Logic dictates that there are economic, recreational, environmental benefits to everyone. Everyone meaning the public, the landowners, visitors, not just the adjacent landowners. As I understand it, if this is a public resource without any restrictions on who can use it, and I don't believe, I believe it's a public utility, not a private utility, then it benefits not just the parties adjacent, it benefits everybody. And in that sense, it should be apportioned, the cost should be apportioned to anyone in the town who would use them, or their visitors. But otherwise, I think we should restrict it to the landowners who are adjacent to the canal. That's it.
Sir. Thank you.
Steve Britt, three one three Stokes Drive, Turtle Creek. You said something a while ago when, when she started about the way the work was being done. It weren't being done at an angle, but a square, or not a square, but an angle. Was that what you said? Well, I'm a landscaper. I run a piece of equipment six days a week. I bought my house in twenty-three. I watch these guys. There's seven people that stay on that canal. Five of them I know is here, including myself. I'm in the middle. I don't own a boat. I own a jet ski because my boat wouldn't get there. At low tide, I can't even get a jet ski there. When I bought this house, I was under the assumption it was going to be twenty-seven foot wide, nine foot lower. That's the way I bought it. Now, that's my fault for buying it like that. I sit back there and figured, just on our canal, we're going to pay about sixty thousand dollars. I watched the guys. No supervision, no consistency. They pulled up twenty foot, they dug a little bit, they pulled up twenty foot. When you get past my house, Matt back here and Tommy, you can't even get to their house. I don't mind. I'd pay ten thousand dollars if you'll fix it right. But I don't believe in paying for something that's not done right. I don't see how you could even charge somebody. I mean, go out there and measure it. No supervision whatsoever. When these guys, they were just hitting the track. Listen, I run a track hoe every day in my life. It was a joke. It's a joke. And for us to pay sixty thousand dollars, I promise you, if you let us get in there for free, I'll fix it. As long as you get Kama, okay, Matt and myself will fix it like it's supposed to be. But it's sad that you come and ask that much money. I didn't write no notes. I'm just telling you, it's very unprofessional for the guys that done it and anybody that would want to charge fifty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars for a canal that you can't even get a jet ski in at low tide.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ken, was there anybody else back there? Okay, anybody else in here? Yes, ma'am, come on. I wasn't trying to shut you off. I was just making sure that back there got equal chance.
I'm Susan Gentry. We're at two fifty.
Hey, hon, you may want to slide that down just a little bit so they can hear you better. Thank you.
I'm Susan Gentry. We live at two fifty Shoreline Drive East, same canal as Steve and Tommy and Mike, Matt. And I have some pictures here, but I only have one copy of each one. I'm just going to show it real quick. This one was taken when we bought our house, when we were doing the preliminary work and the due diligence. We had it appraised. And the appraisal cost was based on that the canal would be dredged. And we were thrilled that we were going to have a usable dock because we could see that it wasn't usable at that point. It was sitting in the mud. So we were thrilled. Never dreamed that you would dredge something and it still wouldn't be usable. Dredging means you make it deep, you make it usable. It's not. So here is a picture that my husband took before we bought the house. I mean, after we bought the house, but before the dredging started last March. And I've circled where our dock is, and you can see the mud. And it's not even, it's not even close. And there's no slope, there's no nothing there. Now, this side, you can see there's some slope down to where they dredged. But on our side, it hadn't even gotten close. This is a picture of, from this past Saturday. And I don't know if you can see, but here's our dock sitting in the mud. And it's the exact same picture, just from a little bit further away. Not one bit of change. I've never paid for something that I know of that I didn't get any benefit from. And I don't intend to change that. So we got to work on this.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Come on up, sir.
Well, I don't got no notes either, but I'm Matt Barnes, and I own property on different rivers.
You will tell them you're dredging, so they won't.
Three fifteen Stokes Drive.
Thank you, buddy.
And the government gives grants to clean rivers out. And I've never received a bill for none of my properties on any river. Y'all received a grant or grants, whatever. So I think the public and everybody needs to see, you know, what and how much that y'all received on paper. And just so we'll know what we're paying for. Because I mean, we're, we're all going to pay a considerable amount of money. And I think we need to see on paper what y'all received and what we're going to be paying out. So, in our canal, it ain't a canal, it's just Turtle Creek. You know, it's not accessible. So I own an airboat, and I've used it down here. And y'all tried to throw me in jail three or four different times on account of my airboat, but it's, it's not legal for y'all to put me in jail because it's North Carolina waters. So that got thrown, thrown out of court, you know? So I mean, I can bring my airboat back and access my property, or y'all can clean it out like it's supposed to be. That's all I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. I wanted to thank everybody for working hard to get the dredging done.
If you will, if you will, state your name.
I'm sorry. Mark Moser, homeowner at fourteen fifteen Canal Drive. I'm representing myself. I have neighbors who are not able to be here tonight. But collectively, we all boat, we all have not huge boats, but twenty-foot boats with that draw ten, twelve inches of water. So we don't need a lot to get out, but we do need some water. I agree with what previously stated that the, the pipe dredging would have been better than the mechanical dredging. Get closer to the docks. Yes, my dock sits in the mud for a while. I agree with all that. The thing that I wanted to mention tonight that I'm not sure anybody else did is that at the end of where they stopped at Jinx Creek, where the feeder canal goes in, the dredging folks left what we call, everybody on the bay, we call it the speed bump. They have to, they left a big hump that was higher than it ever used to be. And we have to go either around it or wait for there's enough water to get over it. So at a lot of times, there's enough water in the bay and in Jinx Creek to be navigable, but we can't get past the speed bump. And I kind of echo what some other folks said, which was, you know, they got to fix that. I mean, if they did all this work, how could they leave that? And I did talk to somebody at DEQ, and I talked to one of the dredging crew guys when they were cleaning up. And they were like, oh, yeah, we'll come back and get it, we'll come back and get it. And they never did. So it's still there. So it's, it would be great. With everything else everybody said I agree with, but it'd be great to get rid of that speed bump. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Anyone else? Double check one time for me back there, make sure nobody up, please. Yes, sir. Come on up. Okay, I'm gonna let this guy here. Go ahead, sir.
I'm Dave Eastburn at four twenty-four Thirty Second Street. I don't live on a canal. I don't own a boat. I've never used the canals. And I appreciate the fact that the way that the assessment was done was for those property owners who have direct benefit from, from the dredging. I'm sorry to hear that there are so many that don't feel like they got the benefit because the job wasn't done very well. But those of us who don't have a boat, don't live on the canal, shouldn't be paying for the canals. So with all due respect to the folks that live on Riverside Drive, we can't even drive out on your road, let alone use your canal. So don't talk to us about paying for your docks. Thank you.
Is that it? Right of that is it? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Did we cover, are we going to try to cover all the ones that got mailed in, emailed in, wanted to read, but they could not attend? Have they all been covered?
I think everybody got a copy of them. I think most of, I know all, pretty much all of these came to me in email, but if you want to read them, I'll sure let you read them.
Are they, are they going on the record?
They should be into the record and Kimberly's record into the file. Yes. Okay, well, she, she can steal, though. She can put them in. Might as well go ahead and put them in there, even if it's twice. It don't matter, let's make sure they put in there.
So they will be included in the record?
It'll be included in the record.
And?
Yes.
Yeah. I, I, I think in, in my humble opinion, that all of the concerns and complaints that got raised publicly by the members of the community who spoke were also in the letters that came in. And I don't, nothing jumps out at me as something significantly different that came through there.
Anything else?
No.
If not, do we have a motion to close the public hearing? So moved. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all on that one. Moving on now. The UDO text amendment, section four nine C five, block length. Mr. Satafield, you have this staff report. Go ahead, sir. Yes. They've got it coming on down here tonight. When it comes down tonight, they'll, they'll be discussing it more as it goes on into the agenda tonight. There's another section that they will go back and do their discussion. Show them what's that, Matt. I mean, yeah, thank you. Yes, yeah, I didn't know that they changed everything. I couldn't see half of it. All right. Go ahead, go ahead.
Thanks, mayor. What we have before you is a definition for block length that we are proposing to be added to your, to the UDO and review beginning in September, actually, when we had Angel Trace subdivision. It was recognized that there is not a definition of block length in the code. So it was just trying to create some standards so anyone can understand what is meant by block length. That's the purpose of the public hearing tonight.
Okay. Do I have a motion by counsel to open the public hearing?
I'll make that one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion before we begin? All right, floor is now open. If anybody would like to come in in regards to any of this UDO, please step forward. Can we check back there and just make sure? None? All right, there's none? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from this counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on next, UDO text amendment, section seven three, definition of model home. Mr. Satafield, you have the floor?
Yes, sir, thanks, mayor. Again, going back to September nineteenth, you may remember doing a slew of changes to the UDO regarding section changes. There were supplemental regulations. One that we skipped at the time was model homes. Planning Board asked me to review it further because there were actually, there was a reference to, in the code, to supplemental requirements for model homes, but there were no standards. So investigated, I did some research, looking at the old code, the new code. And in the scheme of things, what we have proposed to you is to create a definition for model homes. The definition proposed is the same definition found in some newer legislation from the state of North Carolina. So it's, it's consistent with the definition proposed by the state or provided by the state. It also is making model home standards and temporary real estate structures consistent with each other. So that was the purpose of the public hearing.
Yes, sir. Do I have a motion to open this public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion before we begin? All right, public hearing is open now in regards to the definition of model home. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to speak in the public hearing? All right, if there is none, do I have a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next up will be our public comment on agenda items only. Would anybody like to start this? I'll let, yeah, I'll let you get, get here just one second. Soon as he steps back in, closes his door, I'll let you begin, okay? Okay. Go ahead, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Well, good evening. Voice of big microphone. I don't typically need a microphone because I've got a really big mouth. My name is Denise Carlisle. I live at ten oh six West Main Street.
What was your name again?
Denise Carlisle. Would you like me to spell it for you? Okay.
Good, go ahead.
So our family sent an email dated March second, twenty twenty-five to the town officials. And that email is much more detailed than my comments tonight for the sake of time. We can all agree, I believe, that Sunset is a very special, limited resource. And I think we can also agree that we all want to share the resource with others while maintaining the characteristics that make our beach special and safe. Other Brunswick County beaches have found ways to share their beaches, protect their property owner's value, and maintain safe interactions with vehicles and pedestrians. The town of Sunset has voted in a parking plan that is not supported by an engineered parking study that would consider pedestrian safety, ongoing maintenance cost, and the impairment to property values. There are four points that I want to make, and I'll try to keep in the three minutes. Number one, the plan creates unsafe conditions for pedestrians and the likelihood of unnecessary serious injury and death, as is outlined in the NCDOT letter to the town of Sunset dated January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. NCDOT roadway standards have been developed over many years and are based on traffic fatality and injury studies. To intentionally ignore these standards ensures that Sunset Beach will face increased liabilities and carry the burden for contributing to serious and fatal accidents. That should weigh on your conscience as you make decisions about parking. Other Brunswick beaches do not allow parking in right of ways for good reason. Number two, the plan creates increased maintenance costs. Again, per the letter, current parking plan creates higher ongoing maintenance costs at a time when current roads are not maintained at a reasonable standard. The plan ignores roadway design experience and regulation at the expense of our taxpayers. There should be a detailed study on additional maintenance cost with the current plan and the impact those costs would have on future Sunset Beach finances. The town already uses Powell Bill funding, but the formula for that funding cannot support the additional cost this parking plan is going to create. Number three, the plan does not address the adverse impact to property values. Specifically, property owners have enjoyed unrestricted access to their property along the right of way since the beach was developed. Even recent property, excuse me?
He's just clearing his throat. Go, go ahead.
Even property owners have received certificates of occupancy with driveways that span the entire right of way to their adjacent property. There should be an appraisal that estimates the reduction of property values at Sunset Beach compared with neighboring beaches that do not allow property parking in the right of way and do not restrict access to private property in that right of way. So finally, number four. The council has repeatedly referred to some vague obligation to create additional parking. Reference has been made to the public trust doctrine. That doctrine, that statute does not create an obligation to require parking. So my hope, my family's hope, is that the council will reconsider your hurried decision that clearly ignores safety issues and can result in tragic incidents. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else like to speak on the public comment? Ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Katie Bordeaux. My address is six four one Oyster Bay Drive. As town council members, you have two basic roles, just two. The first role is to establish a physical policy by adopting an annual budget that sets your goals, policies, service fees, and the tax rate. Now, in the middle of our budget cycle, you're spending money that was not in the approved budget on your paid parking experiment. The second role is to protect the safety and the welfare of the citizens. This is accomplished with your ordinances you approve and enforce. Many of the taxpayers have serious and financial concerns with the paid parking experience, experiment. Please understand they're not here because it takes a lot of courage to get up here while some of you are not even appearing to be paying attention while you're over there taking notes. There's been no professional study. You all enjoy spending our money. Spend a little money on making a safe and do a professional parking study. Previous councils have looked at the island parking for three decades. That's less than half my age. What is different this time? What is different this time is you all are spending $625,000 in your paid parking experience, experiment. And you all talk up here about a $25 fee. I hope that's not to disguise what you're really spending of taxpayer money. In order to restore public trust, you must acknowledge to the, that the Sunset Beach Taxpayer Association had a court case. It was known as Lot 1A, in which the ruling judge stated that the deed to lot to the town known as gazebo one will be a public right of way in perpetuity. What happens to this lot if you charge for parking? What do the parking fees, where do they go? In order to restore public trust, you must share how you're going to keep us all safe. You must identify safety patterns from the paid parking lot in the beach, busiest road down Sunset Boulevard. While the challenges for safety are abundant, you've not addressed that at all. In order to restore public trust, you also must acknowledge some of the upfront cost. You've not done that. I spent the last several days observing the layout of the parking markers. Obviously, you're using the old D O T standards because you're not looking at oversized vehicles. On a busy summer day, the parking spots that you have one right after the other, that's going to obstruct line of sight. You've used every piece of land on, on, on our island, and it's been unsafe. I want you to envision a hot summer day. The beach is full and the storm comes up. Being of the native of the area, I can tell you that the storm pops up with little notice. The water comes up from the sky. It's fast and it's furious. The streets become very steaming. The rain is loud. Vehicles are loud. People are loud. And all of a sudden, a child runs out in the street that you all set up parking that was unsafe. Boom, a child is hit. Hope it's not one of my relatives. Hope it's not one of your relatives. Hope it's no one. I urge you to slow down in the name of safety. Have Italian mother, her phrase used to be, sometimes it's best to leave well enough alone. I think that's a wise. Please, please slow down in the name of safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. Chris Baumann for 1740th Street. I'm here to talk about parking. You all are really picking on the island people. We got the dredging, we got the parking. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to all the staff for all their hard work with everything that's going on. This plan with parking is very fluid. And if it's hard for the public to keep up, it's also hard for the staff to keep up. I want to specifically talk about the current on-street parking situation on Main and 40th. It's, it's already well delineated. It's fairly safe and it's organized as parallel parking. However, the town council is proposing to more than double the number of spots from six to 14 and make the area perpendicular. There's obviously serious safety concerns. This location is a dead end, and yet this plan would effectively turn it into a parking lot with only one way in and one way out. And it's also listed as a parking lot in your agenda for tonight. We got to talk about the potential safety hazards. Vehicles looking for parking may find no available spots. And with no turn, room to turn around, they're going to be forced to either back into private property. I sent you pictures on this. We have a 19 foot, two inch truck, the blue truck. You saw those pictures if you read your email. What's going to happen is that those trucks are either going to be forced to back into private property or reverse out onto Main Street. That's right near a busy intersection in the 40th Street Beach walkway, which is a totally level walkway. Tons of kids there, parents with their wagons. I think we need to rethink this. I understand, according to an email from Mr. Hargraves, this has been studied. I think you need to study it more. This congestion, you got to think about the fire trucks, garbage trucks, parcel delivery, mail delivery. What's the rationale for almost doubling the spots? It's clear, more spaces mean more revenue for the town. It seems the town has increased the number of spots and plans to charge for them, clearly prioritizing revenue over safety and practicality. This move appears to be more about generating income than addressing any real parking needs, despite the potential risks and disruptions. This is not a good situation for the town of Sunset Beach or the taxpayers. If you're not picking up what I'm putting down, you need to be talking to your town attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Honorable mayor and council members, thank you for your public service and your time and attention this evening. My name is Nancy McFarland, and I am speaking to the proposed parking plan, specifically the impacts to the far west end of Main Street and to my property at 1405 Main Street. I really, I want you to know, I really do appreciate how difficult your job can be. I was the mayor of Raleigh for eight years. So I know all about public hearings and the complexity of this decision-making. And as mayor, I always felt that my absolute first responsibility to the citizens that I served was public safety. And that's what brings me here tonight. My house is at the end of Main Street, the last house across from the proposed 15 perpendicular parking spaces. As you know, we currently have parallel parking there. There's a constant stream of traffic with people driving down and turning around. You did build a beautiful park at the end, and we really appreciate that. But that has brought so much more pedestrian and vehicular traffic to the area. And it's a very tight turn. In fact, it is so tight that the United States Postal Service refuses to deliver mail to my house because they say they cannot turn their truck around. So needless to say, I never received any notification about the plan because the post office won't deliver my mail. I also have difficulty getting the trash and recycling picked up. Sometimes we have to chase the truck down and ask them to come back. But my real concern for this plan with the perpendicular parking spaces here is the availability for emergency vehicles to access this area. If a mail truck can't get in, I can't imagine how a fire truck or an ambulance could access the area. I've passed out a thing that shows the required width for a mid-sized sedan to turn around is about 24 to 25 and a half feet. Currently, there's only 20 feet between the existing parallel parking and the line on the other side. So to increase that with the perpendicular spaces, I just don't see how safely people can come to the end of that road and turn around. I'm also concerned with families that will be exiting their vehicles, walking into the street between cars with a, you know, impeded sight line really does increase the likelihood of pedestrian accidents. I did notice that it looked like you hired an engineering firm to develop a parking plan, but my question is, have you done a traffic study at the end of Main Street? You know, and traffic study is very different. You're actually counting the cars and watching the activity. I guess we're kind of giving you one for free. We're letting you know exactly what we're seeing down there. And I know you have spent a lot of time on this, and I wish we could have been involved earlier, but neither I, my neighbors, the Lazaruses that live next door, they, she just contacted, I think, somebody on Friday. They didn't know about it. Harpers across the street were not notified. So the people that are having the biggest impact were never even notified about the plan. Again, I want to also appreciate all the personal time that you all have put in and that the staff has put in. I, I know from 12 years of experience, the city where you are now, that these studies are great when they come from engineering firms. They don't always reflect exactly what's going on in real life. And I hope that you take our observations and our concerns to heart when you are making these decisions. So thanks again for your time.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Come on, sir. Ready the one? Yes, sir. I'll get you next, back there, sir.
Mr. Mayor, here is the council. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you for a few minutes tonight. I've got a couple of concerns.
If you will state your name and your address. No, you find us.
Uh, Bob Belk. I'm at 1210 Canal Drive. Based on the 21125 letter that we received, Canal Drive seemed like it was a big name on your agenda. My concerns tonight are two. You've already addressed, the main one is parking. Parking on my street can sometimes get very hazardous. The big thing that I'm concerned about is, as I look around Sunset Beach over the last week, I've seen hundreds of parking stops, concrete parking stops, which supposedly y'all are going to be using for designated parking areas. Parking areas that will be in front of people's homes. I'll give you an example. I have two parking places in front of my house, okay? Well, I want to understand with your decision on parking, they're going to be putting a parking stop at one end of a parking place. The other one, another one will be at the other end of the other parking place. Well, if you look down Canal Drive, I don't know who did the road construction on Canal Drive, but it's got a little wavy. And there's no, there's no, there's, there's no. There's, there's no difference between the center line of 30 years ago and now. It's just, it's just all over the place. What that creates is that with parking on that street, you've got situations where people come in and park. And I'll be honest with you. People that come in and park, they could care less. They'll take up half your parking lot or your parking at your house, and they don't care. All they care about is a parking place. Seems like to me we need to address kowtowing to the people that are coming on the island just to park and come to the beach. The other thing I'm concerned about is there are no walking paths on Canal Street. There's very few on Main Street. Well, people walk on this island all the time. They walk at six o'clock in the morning. They walk at 10 o'clock at night. You put those parking times out there where they are. Unless you want the people to walk in the street, they're going to walk on the side, where's the sidewalk's going to be? And they're going to get hurt. There's going to be accidents. There's going to be falls. There're going to be a lot of people injured. So I heard the buzzer go off. I got one other thing. I haven't heard it talked about tonight. I'm concerned about the traffic of golf carts on that island and the lack of enforcement of what the regulations say. Driver's license, 16 years old. When I can sit on my porch and see a 10-year-old kid with four of his buddies on a golf cart flying down Canal Drive. Happens every day. One last thing, and I'll get away. Don't let these golf cart incidents happen again. We've already had one. Two years ago, a kid got hurt on Sunset. He pulled out of his house with five kids on a golf cart. Went out to Main Street. Tried to make the turn. Lipped that golf cart over. And I saw it. I saw the girl laying in the road due to that golf cart. And what's bad? Two blocks down the street was a policeman. And that's sad. And it's going to happen continuously if we don't get this straight, especially on the parking. All I'm saying, on that, on the parking stops, make, make sure your legal department is up to speed because I got a feeling if you put them things in there, people are going to get to know you real well because of accidents and causes from those parking stops.
Thank you, sir. All right, next, sir. Come on up.
Thank you for having me. Um, my name's Mark Farrell. I'm the owner of 1404 Canal. I'm on the south side of the street. I appreciate all the hard work people have done. And frankly, this is my first meeting because I just have now become a permanent resident owner for five years, six years now, but now a permanent resident. So I don't want to replay all back, the entire parking discussion, but fundamentally, looking at a very high level, why do we feel the need to put, from what I've calculated, from what I could gather on the, on the websites, between 560 and 600 parking spots on an island that has two miles of frontage? When our neighbor to the north here, Ocean Isle, at a five and a half mile frontage, has 464 spots? What, what is the need? I mean, they don't feel the need to impair their residence by putting parking mandates in their front yard. Why do we? What's, what's the need here, folks? I hope it's not a money grab because that's really sad. But that's what it looks like, okay? And then leasing a piece of property for a half a million dollars and developing another lot? I mean, that's just insane. Okay, sorry, I'm ranting a little bit. Then the other thing too is, what is the size of the parking spot? I've seen nine by 20. I've seen nine by 22. Judging by the pylons that are just put out here on North Shore, they're 20 feet. I got a picture of my truck sitting in front of that thing. My truck's 19 feet long. That don't work, guys. It doesn't work at all. North Carolina standard, I did some inters, uh, since I'm a new North Carolina resident, North Carolina standards say you need spaces to be at least 200 square foot if there's not ease of entry and exit. That means nine by 22 at a minimum. So your parking spots are too small, and you got too many of them to jam in. And that's all I want to say. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Joe Cantoni, Seven Oi Riverside Drive. Has anyone done an environmental impact study to understand how bringing 560 new cars with 2,000s of people to the beach every day, what that does to the environment, to the life of the people here, to the turtles? You guys love turtles, right? So I think someone needs to understand the environmental impact of what is a beautiful island? And when it was advertised as a beautiful island, when I moved here eight years ago, and to what you're going to turn it into in two years if you allow thousands of people every day to bring their garbage and their waste flutter to the island and environment.
Say my name again?
Yep.
Yeah. Steve Britt.
I'm on three one three Stokes Drive. The gentleman earlier said it's all about the money, and it is. I just asked, what's the average lot on, on the island? What's the average lot cost? You're going over here, you can buy a whole house for half that. But you're trying to give the people that have come over, and not that one person's better than another. I'm not saying that. I don't know where people are in their money, but you're talking about somebody that goes over here and spends two million dollars, two and a half million. I spent a million and a half so I could be on the water. And now you're trying to accommodate all the spec homes to come over here, and that's what they are. They're spec homes, and you're trying to give them the same thing that a man that's paid two, two and a half, three million dollars, and it's not possible. And at the end of the day, it's all about the money. You want more houses over here so you can get more revenue. That's all you're doing is getting more revenue. Now you got the I'm gonna watch what I say, but now you got, now you got to accommodate, and look what you got. And like, like the lady said a while ago, I hope y'all got a good team because this is going to end up in a disaster. How much is enough money? How much is enough? We may need to call Elon Musk in here and, and get that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Um, my name is Jeff Harper. I'm at four twenty six fortieth Street. And we have been on the beach since the sixties. My dad built our house and we're right at the very end where the sunset is. And so we're especially feeling, as a lot of people have mentioned, the impact of, of this potential plan here. And so I want to start out and read a little piece of the commitment to our environment, twenty twenty five by the mayor here, the proclamation. It says, whereas the town of Sunset Beach, two thousand seventeen land use plan vision statement recognizes the town coexists with a fragile coastal environment. It is a primary goal of the town of Sunset Beach to preserve, conserve, and otherwise protect its valuable and beneficial, beneficial natural resources. And as you guys have heard, everybody has pretty politely pointed out that this does not make sense. This is, you're bringing hundreds more people on the beach who otherwise might just drive through and look at the beach and go, wow, if we can find a parking space, fine. If not, well, we'll leave and come back when there's spaces available, right? First come, first served, right? We've got spaces on the island now. And the real answer here, in my opinion, um, is for a shuttle service. It would be much cheaper. You could buy, I mean, there seems to be a lot of commercial spots available, um, you know, right there around the food line, and you could, you could put a parking deck there and a bus coming over, and then you don't have, you don't pressure our island to bear the whole burden of this. So a couple of things I wanted to read here is just some notes. Residents such as ourselves have not been adequately notified of the adverse impact of this plan upon our properties. Us personally, we're going to have, if you guys get this plan approved, we're going to have fourteen cars right up against our house. And my dad fought the last plan, God rest his soul, years ago, because he told the council, this has been thirty, probably thirty years ago. He's passed now. But, you know, that there would be noise and trash, and there has been. People come use our showers. They come and go to the bathroom in our shower. You know, and it's, you know, I, I, I'm not better than anybody else, but the are y'all looking out for us, the property owners, or the public? I mean, the property owners, I think, should be first because we do elect you guys or the ones that who live here. And the town has spent a great, a lot of money on the west end of the park, and I said this to you guys in January. You did a fabulous job. It was great. And people can enjoy the sunset, sit there, have benches. It looks so pretty. And kids are more and more coming in, which they should enjoy too, running all around. And as the point's already been made that with more vehicles, fourteen cars there trying to back out blindly in the rearview mirror, little kids running around, it's a recipe for disaster, gentlemen. That some little kid's going to get run over, and we don't need all that tr- uh, traffic there in that one little area. Or think about this, if all those fourteen spaces are full, and in the middle of the day, somebody's house, like our house, we're right there on the end, catches on fire. Fire truck needs to be in there in seven or eight minutes. Well, everybody's out on the beach and they can't move their cars because they don't even know that's going on. So that area is, should not bear the whole impact of this parking plan, um, in our opinion. And it's, it's very unfair. Um, so let's see. Oh, the other thing I want to say is, um, you know, if, if we go to a shuttle service, then there can be some revenues that could be gained there because, you know, every government needs revenues. We understand that. But going back to the proclamation of the mayor, if we really respect the fragility of this island, I think this is the smallest populated, developed, uh, or one of the smallest barrier islands in North Carolina. So it is fragile. It's extremely fragile. And we want to keep, you know, keep it in that condition and not ruin what many people, everybody here appreciates is a, a little paradise. And it's a great place. And gosh, God gave it to us. So let's, let's just be good stewards and take care of it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Susan Gentry, two fifty Shoreline Drive East. As a member of the North Carolina Shell Club and just growing up, I've been to every beach in North Carolina. Most of them numerous times, and I love them all. And they're, they all have their benefits, and some of them have some things they could work on, just like all, all of us. But one thing I have noticed is the, they, when they provide public parking, they provide it on lots, not on the road, not in the right of way. They, they buy lots. And most of them do not pave those lots because we don't want an impervious surface. They've got, um, rock, they've got, um, sand, just shells, whatever, but they are designated spaces with the wheel stops that seem to be popping up everywhere right now. And they're paid parking, and they have a foot wash, which is amazing for those of us who have six little grandchildren getting in our vehicles a lot. Anyway, my point is that there's better way to provide parking and a reasonable number of parking spaces. Also, one thing else that they do, they put up fences to protect the adjacent property owners. Fences that are privacy fences, so they don't have to worry about somebody using their bathrooms or using their showers or even going under and taking things from, out from under their houses. Some of them even have cameras for security, uh, especially if they allow them to be used at night. Anyway, that's my suggestion. We do not live on the island, but I've been going to this island regularly since nineteen ninety two. This Sunset Beach Island, and I love it, but I can't walk with six grandchildren and a wagon and chairs and umbrellas and beach towels and toys. I can't walk from where these parking spaces are being put down. It's just not possible. So I'd appreciate some, some redirection on the parking situation.
Anyone else?
I'm not coming to you as the mayor. I'm coming to you as a citizen of this town. Guys, I want y'all to look at me, please. Just look at me because my grandpa told me when I was a kid, I'm probably going to get upset. When I was a kid, my grandpa told me that people, adult men especially, are supposed to look at you when you're here. And don't be rolling your eyes or nothing. Let's listen, guys, and let's think about it. We have citizens here that we are here, and our duty is to uphold what they want. It is to work with them and do things. All I hear about a lot of things, and I, there's a lot of stuff goes on, a lot of stuff I agree with, a lot of stuff I don't agree with. But at the end of the day, a lot of times I hear, well, they doing it over here. They're doing it over there. I don't care what these other towns do. I appreciate these towns. We're all brothers and sisters in this world, but at the end game is, I moved to Sunset Beach because it was unique. We need to continue to make it unique. We don't need to be a follower. It's time to be leaders. We don't have to do what these other towns, guys. We can be our own unique town. The first thing in this whole town, every single day, should be to take care of our citizens. That's what we want. That should be the most important thing. The, the dredging, unfortunately, it has not turned out good. It's, it's like getting a matchbox car for some of these people and paying for a Cadillac. That's, that's not right. The parking deal is a fiasco. It's, it's, it's bad. I mean, like people can't even park in food line parking lot, much less parallel park out here. We're going to have wrecks. We've got to rethink this. I want to challenge you guys tonight as leaders of this town. Let's think about this a little longer before we push it through. Let's try. If we have to kick it off next year, so be it. Let's get it organized so when it does go into effect, it's going to keep our people safe. It's going to keep our visitors safe. And most important, it's going to make our town continue to be beautiful, and, and the people love it that have grown up loving it all their life. Thank y'all.
I'd like to speak, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm going to speak here as a council member. And I'm John Corbett, the thirteen thirteen Canal Drive, and I live on the bay. My comment is to you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We've been working on one project for three years and the other project for about ten or twelve years. It's nice to hear you finally complained, but I haven't heard your solution yet.
Evidently, your hearing aids ain't adjusted, sir, because I've said from the get go, from the get go about the parking, that what we had is what we have, and yet now we've just lost about two hundred parking places on Main Street. So instead of creating more, which was supposed to be the thing, more and safely, we went down in numbers and also put everybody out here in one little section that can't be safer. Go ahead.
Yeah. I'm not going to get into a debate on this.
I'm not, I'm not in a debate.
That's, whoa, whoa.
Oh, come on, y'all. Please, come on, people. Go ahead, sir.
I made my, I made my piece. I don't think, I don't believe that your stand was much more than just showboating. That's what I believe right now. Showboating, showboating. You walked up there, you went down, that's showboating.
All right. If that's, if that's what you think, John, that tells me what you really are.
Come and sit in the meetings and get your butt down here to kind of work and come up with solutions, like members of the staff, remember the council have been doing that.
Sir, if I had a vote, everything here wouldn't be all the time. Yes, I promise you that. We can't right now. We can't speak at the moment. There ain't no district, sir. It's all, everybody's all.
We're all here.
Yeah, every, it's all, all over. It's not a district, sir. Go ahead. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I just want to say one thing, and I kept hearing talking about, and I, I, I mean, the parking issues, we're still dealing with a whole bunch of other things, and I haven't seen the final thing anyway. Okay, and I haven't seen the final cost. So I, I have to see all that before I go one way or the other. But I hear a lot of people talking about how Sunset Beach and Ocean Isle Beach, Ocean Isle has fewer parking spaces than Sunset Beach is going to have. Okay, that's probably true, but ninety percent of Ocean Isle citizens live on the island.
We can't, they won't let you, they won't let you talk. I understand.
There's a lot more residents on the island than there are, than are on the mainland, where it's the opposite over here. So, yeah, I, I'm not sure where parking is going to be or where you can park. But if we left it, my concern is if we don't do anything whatsoever, and we just have everybody come here and park where they want to.
Shuttle service.
What, what kind of, what kind of problems will we cause where people will park wherever they want to? And frankly, since we don't have no parking signs, they can't. Now, we should put no parking signs on Main Street, which I think we will, but as far as some of the other streets, I mean, when I drive down, if I see cars parked all over the place when I drive through here, okay? I just know the, the solution isn't easy. And I think that the committee and the parking people have done a really hard job. They work day and night. They're on the island all the time. They're trying to solve the problem. They're not doing this to be mean, or we don't need to, and the revenue is in the issue. We're hoping to break even. I think, I'd like to see us break even after a couple of years, but I don't know because I haven't seen the numbers yet. That's all.
Thanks, sir. Yeah, you go ahead. Why'd you say? Really, you've already spoke at one time, but you, if you wait till the end, you can speak again. Okay, wait one second. Let him, let him, and then I'll let you because you haven't spoke. Go ahead, go ahead.
As most of you know, uh, my name is Mike Hargreaves, and my middle name is probably parking. And I have been, uh, involved in this parking issue for now I'm into my fourth year. One of the things is when I got elected, one of the things that we heard over and over again is I went from house to house in Sunset Beach, talked to people. One of the biggest complaints we heard were from mainland and island regarding the difficulty in parking, problems in parking, people driving, visitors driving, islanders crazy, and some people mentioned it today already. Parking in their, in their, in their garage underneath their house, parking, blocking driveways, leaving garbage along the side of the road, all those things I've heard over and over and over again. What we have tried to do, and I give the council a lot of credit here. I know I wind up speaking about it, being the spokesman of this thing a lot. One of the things we've tried to do in, in the, in the last four years is, is trying to look at what are the problems on Sunset Beach as far as parking is concerned? How to rectify those problems? How to make it a better and safer environment on Sunset Beach? And how to, um, and not overburden the beach as far as cars and as far as density on the beach is concerned? And it was a big part, and you've all heard about the parking committee, I'm sure, that Charlie and I ran. That equal number of people from the island, equal number of people from the mainland, two business people with, did fourteen people sat there for one year and traveled this island, looked at the island, stood on the island, stood in parking places over here. I was here almost every day for three years, not during the season, not on the beach now season. But what we gathered was a lot of good stuff about how to make parking safer. Now, we don't have an island that's conducive to parking. Somebody here mentioned parking lots. I've talked to engineers over and over again, and they look at you straight in the eye and they say, the best kind of parking are parking lots. Get a parking lot. Get another parking lot. Well, we're looking at a parking lot, as most of you know. It happens to be in the middle of the island again. And of course, you have people that say, we got to get that parking lot to take some parking off of Main Street and off of Canal Drive. And some people say it just makes more parking in the middle of the island. It's going to get even worse. That's what we deal with. That's what we deal with every day when you, when you look at parking around here. What the parking committee attempted to do for this year, twenty twenty five, the season in twenty twenty five, is to take parking off half of Main Street. We kept debating on how to make it safer, how to make it work, how to make it so people coming out of their driveways had a little bit of sight line so they can see the traffic coming both ways. We did. Well, the plan simply said, we're going to take parking off that south side of Main Street, and the council approved it. We said count with traffic would come off or parking would come off, come off one side of Canal Street. The council approved it. Now, we've been parking that way, the way we park in this community, we've been parking that way for forty years. And probably for another forty years, we could park the same way. But more and more traffic, more and more people, more and more development are bringing more people to our island. It's, it's, to me, it's the most beautiful beach of all I've, all I've been to, and I've been to all the rest of them looking at their park. I guarantee you that. And somebody said to me the other day, well, where, 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 where these cars going? If you can't park them on Main Street, you can't park them on Canal one side, you're going to try to make those safer. Where are you putting the cars? And I said, well, the committee said a parking lot. And the parking lot, though, happens to be in the middle of Sunset Beach on the island, middle of the island. And there's a lot of reasons why we should get that piece of land, why we should lease that piece of land. We can't buy, but lease it for long term, so we control it. And so we set up a parking lot and try to take some cars off the streets. That's what the parking committee did. Talk about safety? That was a huge step, a huge step. It was a good step. Now, a couple of other things that were said here. Some people, some people talked about number of parking places. The, I hear it a lot. People call me and say, how come we're trying to put a thousand parking places or how could, we don't, we can't put all these parking places? When we started the parking study, the official number of parking places on Sunset Beach was seven hundred and thirty eight, controlled by the town, controlled by the town. We got done, it was five eighty. We cut down the number of parking places. We didn't add more. We cut them down. We tried, we tried, we tried, we tried. We cut them down. We tried, we tried, we tried, we tried, we cut them down. We always talked about safety, we always talked about ways that people could walk, get from the, get from their parking to the beach safely, get back, all that kind of stuff. Was continually done over and over again. There was another one here. Yeah, I mentioned more people, and Canal, Canal, I mentioned that also. But what I've been doing now, we've been working on Canal Drive parking, and we've been working on Main Street. And we've been going from house to house, talking to people. I've never had a better experience in my life. I've never had a better experience. When you sit down and talk, and Mr. Belk will tell you that, when you sit down and talk, you, you, you come to agreements, and you come to ideas on how to make things better. And when we let people know what the committee has been doing, what the, what the ramifications are to their decisions, and what the council has passed, people agree. And people say, hey, you're trying, you're trying to make this a better experience than it was. When, when the NCDOT official said to me, you can keep going for 40 more years if you want to. They'll bless us, parking at random for 40 more years. Well, I said to the guy, I said, 40 years ago, there weren't that many cars, there wasn't that much parking. And fortunately, or unfortunately, not a bridge came. And what I'm being told, and I talk to the police, and I talk to the fire every year, fire people, more people on the beach, more people on the beach, more people on the island. We're getting more and more people. If we let it continue, and this is what I pleaded with the NCDOT, if we continue the way we're going, it's disaster for Sunset Beach. It's disaster for Sunset Beach. More and more cars, more and more people, more and more congestion, and more and more chaos, basically. We got to try to take what we've got, and we've got to try to organize it. And we got to try to look for those places and look for those ideas, and look for, to make things safer. And believe me, I have gotten great ideas from you. I don't know, you individually, but I've got great ideas in talking to people. They've been very good and very helpful, very helpful. And, and all I can do is say to you that the parking plan that we have, really, I believe, and from my heart, I believe this, will help Sunset Beach. Well, is it, is it a solution for everything, though? If I had my way, what we want to do is what Oak Island did. Oak Island's got a lot of parking lots. Go to Oak Island, parking lot after parking lot after parking lot. That's wonderful, they got a lot of extra land. And it would be nice, but we don't. We've parked on Main Street, for example, for 40 years. I don't, I personally don't want to, I don't want to continue the way it was. It's only going to get worse, more congested and more crazy. So we take parking off one side, we hope it'll calm things down, and we're going to watch it this year, we'll be over there again this year, watching that plan and see if it works, or if it doesn't work, maybe we got to do something else. Maybe we've got to take parking off of Main Street. Now, drive down Ocean Isle, drive down, drive down Holden Beach, drive down Oak Island. There's no parking on their main streets. Where will parking have to go, though? It'll have to go back on the numbered streets behind Main Street. Now, that's the way it was until 2012, there was parking on the numbered streets on Sunset Beach. There was, there's a 30-foot right away, if you know anything about right aways, there's a 30-foot right away, 20-foot road, okay? Five feet on each side is a, is a right away. And you had two-side parking, two-side parking, two-way traffic. How is it possible, is what I told the, the old timers here that, that lived in it, lived in that environment. How is it possible? Oh, they said, we did it, you know? To me, it's dangerous as hell. I wouldn't want to do it, I wouldn't want to recommend it. But if we had to go to the numbered streets, we'd have to make them all one way. We'd have to make them all one way, parking on one side, one way, and take parking off Main Street. That's one thing that the Parking Committee studied. But came to a conclusion, oh my God, I don't know. I, I had trouble with that one myself. But that's a solution, that's one way. So they decided, take parking off one side of Main Street, take parking off one side of Canal, and let's use that parking lot for those cars, and let's get them off the streets. I think that was a good suggestion, good idea, we put in our plan, and council passed it. Now, as always, what I say to people is if you have any questions, comments, a lot of rumors going around, boy, I know it because I'm getting them all the time. Contact somebody, contact me, all you want, I'll sit down and talk with you. I think Mr. Belk and I sat there for, what, about an hour?
Hour and 15 minutes.
Hour and 15 minutes, and talked about parking on the island. Now, I have to do that with about 100 homes, so it's hard, but boy, is it worth it. Boy, is it worth it, because I learn every time. Mr. Belk had history, and I mean, he had good history and educational history about the island and about his house and about parking. It helped me. So if we all come together and we all say, look, let's look at this problem. This committee dealt with it for one full year and came up with a plan, hopefully to make it better. And that's what I say to everybody. This committee didn't pound their fist, I don't want to pound my fist and say, boy, this is going to work. We're hoping it's going to work. But we're willing, if it doesn't work, to make changes to try to make parking safer. Somebody just talked about parking places and how big they are. When we first started the, first started the committee, we were looking at 18 feet-long parking places. By the time our engineer did our engineering study of what we had done, we went to 22 feet for parking places. Every parking place that we're going to designate is going to be 22 feet. That's pretty good size, that's about the best you need moving forward. So our hope is, my hope was always, get the people involved. We had open houses here, I don't know how many people attended open houses we had here, where parking places were on the walls and people could see and all that kind of stuff. I don't know how many entered, came to those things. And we had plenty of opportunity for feedback, but we have a plan. We'd like to move forward with the plan. We're making little adjustments to it now. NCDOT told us to stop for a minute, and we did, and I want to report on that tonight of exactly what happened in the meeting, what we did in the meeting, what's coming about because of that meeting, and what they were really concerned about, what they were concerned about, and what we're adjusting because of it. We're open to anybody giving us advice anytime. But we've got to move forward, and it's time, I think, to try this plan. It was all built on safety, it was all built on caring for Sunset Beach. It really was, it really was. The committee voted against, the committee didn't vote, we came to consensus against buses, asking for people to bring buses to the island. Why? Not about parking, beach density. That's another part of our plan, was to look at beach density. How many people can our beach hold? How many cars can our island hold? We really looked at that, looked carefully at it, and came up with what we thought, 14 people thought, was a good idea. I think you've got to give this group. I, I can't thank them enough for the time. And they were scared. This wasn't a committee that came to us saying, oh, we want to be on this committee. They were scared the way their neighbors would, would handle them, would talk to them, would treat them. But they stayed, they stayed, and they worked, and they were wonderful. So my plea to you is, I'm going to report on some stuff tonight on parking, try to bring you right up to date on where we are, what's happening. But if you have any questions, you have any concerns, call me. Call Charlie, Charlie's not here tonight, but Lisa has open house. Lisa, you have open house every Thursday, from what times though? 1:00 to 3:00. Stop in and see her. Pete, Pete Lark is not here tonight, but he would have one Friday after every council meeting. He won't have it this week. But, you know, and I'm always available. Call me, I'll come over and sit down with you, call me, you know, I'll email you, we'll talk. And just laid out as it is. And people get to realize when they talk to me, I'm not, I'm not, I'm telling like it is all the time. I'll tell you exactly what I learned, exactly what it is. You may not agree, I'll certainly tell you what it is. Give it a shot, and that's why I'm asking you, just give it a shot. This committee worked hard, and they, I thought they did a great job. Is it perfect? No. Is it, do we need more changes in the future? Yes. I was on the phone calling people with vacant lots and see if they would, see if we could lease them to put 12 cars in a vacant lot, until I realized that the neighbors would probably kill me if we ever were successful on that. But we tried more things to try to accommodate a number of cars, less than previously, less than previously numbers, but a number this committee felt that was good for now, for now. And don't go above that number, that's for sure, we don't want to do that, see that in the future. This island can only hold so many cars, and it parks differently than other islands. And it's a very frustrating parking on this island. It's very hard, it's very hard. That's enough for me to say, I'm sorry. So if you have any questions, come and see me, call me, do anything you like like that. I'd be more than happy to just sit down and talk with you. Mayor.
You wanted to speak, public comment, go ahead, sir.
Scott Baumann, 417 40th Street. I was actually not going to speak tonight, but the little dust-up earlier kind of proves that I think you guys brought a lot of this problem on yourself. You're, you, what Mike just said kind of concerns me a little bit. We hope it's going to work, and if it doesn't, we can make changes. The, the DOT, NCDOT, in their January 30th letter, strongly recommended a comprehensive, and they didn't use the word professional, but they suggested getting a grant, which means paying for a study, a comprehensive, professional study. I appreciate everything you've done, the committee's done. These are not experts, I'm sorry. Hardworking, thoughtful, you know, a lot of work went into it, I understand that. But you just admitted, it's hard, it's, it's tough. Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we do what the NCDOT is strongly recommending? It takes the onus off of you guys, too. You know, I, I, just for the life of me, I'm not a big guy with, on consultants, but these aren't, what do you mean, a consultant, this would be a professional that tells you the best thing it could do. And that doesn't mean you have to do it, but the, the committee was a bunch of citizens put together. I committees all the time, people have been on committees on church, council, church things, and you know, that half the people shouldn't be there. I'm not saying anybody didn't work hard and have good intentions, but good intentions isn't going to necessarily solve the problem. I'm sorry. The DOT strongly recommended it, and it seems like we're ignoring it. Are we afraid what they might tell us? That, I'm thinking people are afraid what they might tell us, we don't want to hear what they're going to tell us.
Say it again? I think everybody spoke. They really don't let you, but I'll let you go ahead, let's ask you a question.
Is there anywhere, we talked about the problem, parking problem, part of the problem, is there anywhere that in the past that the council has concisely defined the problem? For example, using statistics from, for increased parking tickets or, or increased accidents on the street with, with other cars, and they went up over the last 15 years, some kind of data in a concise definition of, okay, this is the definition of the problem of parking on Sunset Beach. Is that, does that exist anywhere, I'm just, just asking?
Ms. Anglin would know the answer to that, and that would be something as far as the data.
It would be logical to have that as a starting point, you know, that everybody could agree to.
No.
She don't have that.
That's, I know, that's what I, that's what I know either.
All right, thank you. If there's nothing else, then we'll be moving on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda, the February 3rd, 2025 meeting minutes. February 7th, 2025 meeting minutes. The resolution of support for updating BIMP. The monthly report for the public works, monthly report for finance, monthly report for building inspections, monthly report for the fire, and monthly report for the police. Does any member of council have any questions for any of these people?
No, I do not.
No, I do not.
All right, we'll be moving on to our Town Administrative Report, but any member of staff that doesn't have anything else is welcome to leave, I know a bunch of them standing in awe. Go ahead, Ms. Anglin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things for you tonight. The Town Council will hold a budget meeting this Friday, March 7th, at 9:00 a.m. The budget suggestion form is on the Town website in the Document Center of the Government section. Citizens are encouraged to submit suggestions for council consideration and to attend the meetings either in person or view the meeting live on YouTube. The Palm Cove Pre-Dredge Analysis RFQ was released in mid-February. Submittals are due back to us on March 20th at 2:00 p.m. There's a vacancy on the Board of Adjustment. If you are interested in serving on the Board of Adjustment, please submit a paper application or online in the Town Board section on the Town website. The engineers are working on the construction plans for the Majestic Oak Park. The contractor will start forming the concrete curbing this week at the park, mainland park. While construction is taking place, the park remains open. However, the parking lot and immediate roadway may be closed periodically. And as Mike said, I do have a block of time on every Thursday from 1:00 to 3:00. No appointments needed, please come see me. That's all I have.
Anything else, any member of council have any questions for the administrator?
I do not.
Not? Okay, moving on, thank you, Ms. Anglin. All right, next up is our old business, Earth Day Arbor Day proclamation. Each member of council and anybody that's been online has seen this. Y'all have anything to add to this?
No, I do not, I think it's good.
We need, we have a motion to approve this proclamation?
I'll make a motion to approve a proclamation for Earth Day Arbor Day.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on now, Island Parking Program Update and Resolution, Ms. Anglin.
I've done enough talking.
This is actually Mike.
Okay, Mike.
Oh, it is? Okay. Here I am again. Island Parking Program Updates and Resolution. What we want to do tonight is, we had promised this the last time that we would do tonight, is update up you all right up to the minute as far as Island Parking Program and what's been happening, what we're looking at, and movement from there, I guess. Now, the first thing there is, is purpose, and we'll get back to that a little bit deeper into the thing. But the first thing is background and updates. And as we've, you've been told before, and as we have said before, the parking plan is broken up into phases, phases, over a series of time. There's no way you can do all we need to do in parking in one phase, or just do it all at once. Phase one is what I'm going to ask Lisa to talk about in a minute. It's a, it's a first part of the parking plan. Town staff is working on that right now, that's what we're working on immediately. So Lisa, if you'll fill us in a little bit on those, what's happening so far in those various issues that are there.
Sure. The phase one parking areas that the Town Council approved at the December 2nd and December 10th meeting included the gazebo, street scape, Main Street and 40th Parking Lot at the end, converting the short streets on 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12 to one-way streets with parking for cars, and 9th Street has LSVs. Canal at Main Street on the east end. North Shore Drive West at 40th Street, North Shore Drive West at Sunset Boulevard South, and North Shore Drive East at Sunset Boulevard South. And those are the areas that the town staff is currently dealing with right now.
Okay, so that's an update on that, and that's what they're working on, that's good. At the same time, now, let me add a little bit to that. At the same time, there's, the next step or part of phase two and part of phase three besides that is working on Main Street and working on Canal Drive, Main Street and Canal Drive. So what Pete Lark and an So what Pete Larkin and I decided to do with the support from Mr. Nern and the watchful eye of our project manager Dustin Graham, was to try to begin the acceleration a little bit of what needs to happen on Main Street and what needs to happen on Canal Drive. The whole idea here is starting the process for designated parking on these two streets. And really, North Shore also, we took a look at also. Pete took, Pete spent a tremendous amount of time taking the past drawings that have been done of Main Street and Canal Drive and North Shore, and redoing them, reworking them, and seeing if he could put together a strong package for what parking should look like on these streets. Now, this will all be, by the way, this, this, everything we do when we do these types of things are totally reviewed by our engineering group. We don't, I'm not, and Pete is an engineer, I'm not an engineer. And it has to be, these things have to be reviewed and reviewed by our engineering team. So while that was going on, while Pete was doing all his part of things, we sent letters, and of course, if you're from Main Street or Canal, you receive letters from us and telling you what we're going to be looking at, talking about looking at right-ofways, talking about looking at driveways, talking about looking at parking, and saying to the citizens that as far as your driveway is concerned, let's come, let's, let's talk about this as a team. And that has worked out very, very well. I can't, I can't say how well it's worked out so far, and the people, all the people we've met with. The process is slow, however, and the communication, but communication's been pretty darn rewarding. In conclusion, the town, let me add a little more to this confusion that goes on here. What the, what the town is doing is three different projects at once, all at the same time. Then this didn't happen because we wanted it to happen. It happened because it sort of fell into place. Of course, there's the parking plan, and you people know about the parking plan. And I hope you do. And that's what we're debating a little bit tonight. At the same time as a parking plan, you've got paid parking coming in and addressing that, and working through that at the same time. And the third thing we've been doing, which people don't really know about that much, and we talk about it with them, they find it very interesting, is looking at the right-ofways in front of houses, their right-ofways. Right-ofways belong to the town, and that's an education in itself to some people. They think they own their property right from their garage right to the, right to the street. They don't, there's, there's a right-ofway there, owned by the town. That's where all the infrastructure goes. And if we need to get to it, we need to get to it quickly if there's a problem. And so we try to keep those clear, and it's what we're doing, is trying to clear those things. So all of these things are happening at once, and it does get confusing. It does get confusing. And I talk to people about, you know, their biggest concern, they may talk about paid parking, and they may talk about the parking plan, right-ofways, but, but that's all of those things that we're trying to address. So that's, that's pretty hard, and it's pretty important. And we've decided to let's, let's focus on these things, let's get it over with, let's do it the way it's supposed to be done. So, let's go a little bit deeper here now in this thing, and go to number B, letter B. And that's talking about the numbered streets and LSV parking. As you may know, the parking committee first recognized the need on our island for delineating parking. We talk about designated parking, which means you tell a person where they can park. The philosophy we've tried to change is, in the past years, we've told people where not to park. We want to turn that around now and tell people where they can park. And that'll take a lot of signs off Main Street and all that kind of stuff. There's a lot of good stuff to that. But you also, the one of the big complaints we heard as a committee was, the golf carts are parking in, where cars and trucks should park. That shouldn't happen. Well, in NC, in, in New York, or New York, in North Carolina law, golf carts can do that, by law, they can do that. And so, but how can we help this situation? And what we decided to do was delineate some parking. It means set some parking places aside for golf carts, LSVs, set some parking, a lot of parking places aside for cars and trucks. And so we began to look at delineating parking. What we picked out was the numbered streets 27 through 39. Really, you can say 40 if you want to, but no, we didn't do anything with 40. 27 through 40. And what it was, was trying to tuck some golf carts right into the beginning of Main Street and those numbered streets. Try to tuck, tuck some golf carts right in there. They're only four foot wide, they don't open any doors. And we found that it really worked nicely. You could put four, six, eight golf carts on the street, and it gives people who ride, have golf carts a special place to park, and it works. So that was in the plan, it was approved by council. But in Peter's attempt to put, or get parking, organize parking on Main Street a little bit better with drawings, he, we found that he was able to find LSV or golf cart parking places along Main Street, especially in the west end and the east end, but down the west end we're looking at most of the time. And he was able to find places. And the total number of those places equaled what was on the numbered streets. So he, we added some places for golf carts, LSVs on Main Street, and that sort of equal it was on the numbered streets. Now again, we didn't want to have more parking places. So what we're recommending tonight that the council accept is the idea of taking those parking places off the numbered streets now and putting them on Main Street. No change pretty much in the number of parking places, but it isn't adding more parking places. So we'll take, we're asking council to agree tonight to take some places off of Main Street. Oh, no, I'm sorry, off of the numbered streets coming off of Main Street, which as you others said. Put them on Main Street, and, and so clear those numbered streets for now, for now. That doesn't mean the plan changes, we may adjust later on because there's a need to do that. So I would like to make a motion that we ask our engineering firm to remove the LSV parking from the numbered streets 27 to 39, and using the larking draw, larking drawings, place a similar number of LSV parking places on north side of Main Street at the west end of the island for the 2025 parking season. Let's see how this, no, let me stop there. Mr. Mayor, motion's been made.
I have a second?
I would like to make a comment. I think before I make, we vote on this, I think we'd like to know what happened with the NC DOT regarding Main Street, and have a better idea of how that we are resolving now with the NCOD about parking on Main Street before we have a vote on whether to put golf carts on Main Street.
I, we could do that, or I could say to you, it's okay. But I could certainly say that to you.
I don't think that I want to hear it's okay.
If you want to, you want to jump there, we can, we can.
I think we have to.
Jump there, it's fine, it's not a problem, okay. What Michael is referring to there is the letter that's been referred to a couple of times here from NC DOT, North Carolina Department of Transportation. That was from Ben Hughes, who is the regional director at NC DOT. And that was, that letter was in response to a verbal as well as a written communication that he had received from us, the town, outlining the details of the comprehensive parking plan for Main Street. Now, remember what we talked about just a few minutes ago? Phase one doesn't deal with Main Street, okay? The NC DOT only, only, own, I'm sorry, owns Main Street, and that's what they care about. As far as the parking on our own streets, they say to us point blank, that's your business, that's your business. So we went to him on, here's the part of the parking plan that is for Main Street. They came back to us with a letter, that a lot of you have seen, and with an invitation to meet. And we said, yes, we will certainly meet with you, we will certainly do that. I read a statement in the last council meeting, letting everybody know that there would be a meeting, okay? And we would report tonight on the meeting, so that's what we're doing now. So on February 18th, February 18th, Sunset Beach Town officials, and it was led by Lisa, there was, Dustin was there as project manager. Our, our engineer was there from McGillan Associates. And John and I met with three NC DOT engineers, Ben Hughes and three NC DOT engineers. And the reason for the meeting was the letter, obviously, that was sent to Mrs. Anglin. And so we wanted to talk about that. In the beginning of the meeting, we sort of stated our case. And our concerns regarding parking, the reasons for our parking plan, the reasons why we were taking parking off of Main Street. And they accepted that, and the idea of designated parking. Now during the meeting, and it didn't take long to get there, during the meeting, the town and NC DOT officials reached an understanding very quickly. Following DOT guidelines regarding the means the town will use to designate parking on Main Street. What we found was, the concern of NC DOT was not our parking plan, but it was one part of our parking plan that talked about how we would designate parking on Main Street. They didn't like that. That was fine, it's their street. So we then began to discuss, and if you could sit in a meeting with four engineers, all of them deal with parking and all of them study all those issues, talking to one another and trying to get to a point where we had some good understanding, it was very educational. We threw in our questions for sure, but those officials and NC DOT worked together to outline the details of the proposed plan, okay? And again, as I said, it didn't deal with the parking plan per se. They didn't, they, it was fine to take parking off 1 to 27th Street to try to take some pressure off the middle of the island that, that the parking committee proposed. It's okay to go one side of Main Street. It's okay to put handicap parking on one side. In conclusion, with, with designated parking as the focus of the plan for Main Street, the town and Sunset, and town and NCOT both committed to developing a plan. Discussions were never about what we couldn't do. They centered on how both sides could reach an understanding that we blessed the town and the state. Now let me explain to you where the plan stands now. You got to understand now, just like we talk about all the time, the proposed plan may go through adjustments both sides. But right now, here's the way it's going to work. It's going to have three steps to it. First step is to take the north side of Main Street and survey it. Survey it from one end to the other. The idea here is to make sure we know precisely where the right-ofway is on north side of Main Street. Now, a lot of people here could probably go out there and say, there's the right-ofway. But we want to, we agreed with that, we want to know exactly where it is. Secondly, after that, we'll begin preparation of the right-ofway. Preparation of the right-ofway. That means leveling it, making it work a little bit better than it is now. If you notice in some of the parking places, they're like this a little bit, they're like, they're angled a bit. And how do we get that smoothed out a lot better? How do we make it work a lot better? And then finally, installation of the designated parking places. Now, the parking places as of now will be designated by stone and outlined by concrete ribbon. Now, my question was, what is concrete ribbon? Concrete ribbon just is a, a concrete, could be preformed or not, that would circle or go around, probably in a rectangle, around the parking place. That would hold a stone in place, and that would signify or designate the parking place. What is, in my mind, what is so good about this plan is that it would certainly be very obvious to any visitor, anybody coming to our island and looking for a parking place on North Main Street, exactly where they could park and exactly where they couldn't park. It would be a time now of taking away the fear that many of the people have along the north side of Main Street and the south side of Main Street, that their drivers are going to be blocked or partially blocked. And so, and, and at the same time, make sure they have some sightlines, which are not mandatory by NC DOT regulations, but try to give them some sightlines. And so that is the plan as it stands now. And remember what I said earlier. Our goal was to ensure we're visitors on the island clearly would know where to park, where to park. So Michael, that's, that's the plan. And so it, it doesn't say you can't park on Main Street, it doesn't say you can't park on the north side of Main Street. And, and it, they took, what was very interesting, all the engineers took Peter's drawings and said to us, thank you. These are going to really, really help because we don't have to do the initial layout of parking now. Now, it's got to be engineered, obviously, they're going to really look at this stuff closely. But they thanked us for that, they took them. And now the communication that's going on now is between the engineer, our engineer from McGillan Associates, and the three NC DOT engineers. And Ben Hughes didn't delegate this, he is running this team. So we were very happy with that, too. He was very, he was very upfront with us, cordial with us, and came in with what I call a can-do attitude. And he just said, let's get this done, and let's do it right. And let's do what's best for the town, and let's do what's best for the state. So, I made a motion.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Phase one is a survey that the engineers are working on.
Yes.
What exactly are they doing? And they're coming up with what areas we can park? Or designate for parking?
Yes, they're, they're looking at the total strip of property down what we would call the right-ofway of the north side of Main Street, exactly where it lies, exactly where it lies on the ground. You'll begin to see, you might see sticks with pink ribbons on them or something like that as you walk, go down Main Street a little bit. That'll tell you exactly where it is, exactly where parking places can be.
And by default, by designating the parking places, then we will have identified where the driveways are?
Yes, this was something that we have debated on this council about designating driveways. And the, one of the NC DOT engineers, right away, after a few minutes of talking, said, wait a second. The key thing here is designated parking, and you want that done, and you want it done clearly, he said, yes. They say, you do it this way, and it'll be so obvious where to park. And then you don't have to put curb stops designated driveways. Driveways will be open, driveways would be clear without having to mark them in any way. They do it all over, they say. So to me, that was good, that would be less work for us, and it would certainly make for less concrete and curb stops around and all that kind of stuff, that's for sure. So, yes, it's, it's a plan that makes a lot of sense, a lot of common sense. And they're working, they're engineers now, it's enhanced engineers right now. They're working, they're reporting to Lisa, they don't report to me, they report to Lisa. I asked Lisa what's going on. So that's what we'll hear from them, stage by stage, step by step.
One more thing, please.
Yes, sir.
Could you address how the bike lane, the width of the parking spot, space between the parking spot and the bike lane, and how the bike lane impacts that survey and that, those factors?
Yeah, what John's talking about is the bike lane on Main Street. You should, you know, it's on each side of Main Street, there's a special area there. Sometimes it gets a little narrow, sometimes it gets a little wider. That's the bike lane. NC DOT has specific rules, which says that a parking place must be so many feet from the bike lane. Why, obviously, you open a car door and a bike's coming down, so it makes safety, it's all about safety. And we agreed that we must have at least a couple of feet there between the, the bike lane and the ability to park a car. And so that's coming into this, these.
So two feet wide and then a nine-foot parking space wide that goes into it?
Total parking place, nine feet. And so you go nine feet and 22 feet long, so for, for cars and trucks.
And each one will have to be? And each one will have to be engineered and designed and built with the stone and the concrete ribbon around them to specifically designate them?
Absolutely. 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 So that, we feel, it was a, it was a better plan than we had, and I feel, I feel that. Not everybody will admit that, but I feel it. And so it's going to really designate parking very well on Main Street. So let me go back now so we can maybe get past this one. The motion that I made now to, I made, to take those LSV vehicles off of those numbered streets, 27th through 39th, and move them to Main Street.
Motion's on the floor. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now let's move on.
Next up.
We've got, we've got another part of this now. We got the resolution now. We got the resolution. I'm sorry. Now, what we're asking tonight, and this is, this is a big, a big step now, parking on Main Street. The parking committee, of course, recommended limited parking, as I said, to the north side. As a result of the recent meeting with NCDOT, there is a need, and this came from the engineers, to temporarily close Main Street, temporarily close Main Street to parking, not to cars. I've had that called, too. Close it to parking in order for this work to be done. They don't want cars trying to park as they're trying to designate parking places, as they're trying to do their surveying, as they're trying to work on the right of way. So temporarily close Main Street to parking while this first, this phase of Main Street parking works or is put into place. And we have a resolution there, the resolution. And why there's a resolution is because NCDOT owns Main Street. They can pass the ordinance to take or stop parking. We have to ask them to do that according to their rules. We have to, we must ask through a resolution that parking be shut down on Main Street temporarily to get this work done. Then they will implement a no parking ordinance right away that officially shuts it down. So there's a resolution in the packet today. And do we have to read the resolution, Lisa? Or do we, could we just? Okay. So I, basically, the resolution says that we support taking the traffic or stopping the parking on Main Street and asking NCDOT to, to form an ordinance to do so.
Temporarily.
Temporarily.
Stop.
Temporarily. Yes. Yes.
So the question that jumps out to me, Main Street's pretty long. We've got north and south side. There's different types of areas that can be parked. Are we going to close Main Street until all of Main Street is done? Are we going to try to do this in sections and then open those sections up to parking once they've been surveyed, designated, and constructed?
What the agreement is now, here's the agreement, here's what we, we think is the agreement, I think it is the agreement now. What we're going to do here is not do the whole Main Street all at once, all at once. But the idea is to start at the west end and work from the west end to Sunset Boulevard. West end to Sunset Boulevard. And do the surveying, do the work that needs to be done to clear the right of ways and make them, you know, level and all that kind of stuff, and then put in the parking places. Then that part of the island would be opened up for parking. Then work on Sunset Boulevard to the east end the same way, so that we can get some parking opened up as soon as possible, basically. But taking it in a two-part plan right now. Yes.
So when would this no parking rule go into effect? And that means from the time it goes into effect until parking is completed, that there will be no right-of-way parking on Main Street, anywhere on Main Street?
Yes.
All of those spaces have, will have gone away?
Gone away. Yes.
So when does that take effect? And then do we have a timeline or a hopeful timeline for completing the west end and then doing the east end?
The goal, now we have a general goal right now, of completing Main Street and completing Canal Drive before, and right now it's not, we've got to hone in specifically as we begin doing this, but it's for, before the 2025 parking season opens up. So that's the hope.
April 1st?
That's, not April 1st, no.
Okay.
Well, that is our parking season.
That's a parking season.
That is our paid parking season.
But that's the, we're saying the, the main, I guess you call the main parking season, where everybody comes. What's a better way of saying that?
Memorial Day.
Memorial Day?
High season.
High season. Yeah, I like that. High season. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. That's the goal at this point. Now, we're going to be giving you, we can't report to you now every month, that's too long. So what I can ask you to do is, is refer every once in a while to the webpage and look at latest news. We're going to start posting there as things come in regarding this plan, where we are with it, where we are. So you can keep up the date. And if you have questions, let us know what the questions are. But that's, that's what we're going to be doing now, a little bit more reporting. So afterwards, if you want to. So that's the way it is working right now. Now, so I'll make the motion then to approve the resolution requesting North Carolina Department of Transportation to consider implementing a no parking ordinance for SR 1177. And what, to answer another part of your question, John, I didn't answer, what they said, as soon as they received this, they will move to close parking on Main Street.
And then we will have no parking signs on Main Street?
We'll have some no parking signs there.
And we'll be enforcing no parking anywhere on the right of way of Main Street?
Yes.
Whether you're an owner or resident?
Yes.
Or visitor?
Yes.
Or anything else there?
Yes. Absolutely. Thank you for that.
And we, we want to get that done as quick as we can.
We want to get that done as quick.
For lots of very obvious reasons.
Oh, yes. Yes. That's our hope. That's our hope.
Motion's on the floor.
Sorry.
Motion's on the floor. It's the pleasure of the council in regards to this.
Was there a second?
No.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Off Main Street.
All right.
Now, we've got a little bit more.
Yeah. Go ahead.
We wanted to fill you in with a little bit more information, bring you up to date even more. I just talked about the, answered John's questions regarding breaking up the project and along north side of Main Street into two parts. We're also, at the same time, going to begin working and not, beginning the construction, working on Canal Drive. Canal Drive also has gone down to one side. From the committee, for safety, take parking off of one side of Canal Street for this season. And calm, hopefully calm that street down a little bit more and make it a little better for our visitors and, of course, the people who live there. That's, that's what we talk to all the time. So that's there. The other thing is people have asked me, now what are you going to do with the south side of Main Street? What are you going to do with that? And of course, there's supposed to be no parking this year in the south side except for handicapped, handicap accessible. But we're also looking there. And we've had sort of a preliminary inspection of the south side of Main Street, which indicates we may not be able to park cars on the south side in the future because of what John asked about before, the lack of room between the sidewalk, the sidewalk and the bike lane, and the bike lane on Main Street. So that's something we're going to be working on and studying. And we're already looking at an alternative there a little bit. And maybe that could be something, something like LSVs or something like that, that could, you know, give us some parking places for the smaller vehicles, but maybe no, no cars there in the future. So that's something that's coming up and that's something that you might, might find is interesting. The one thing you'll ask about, and everybody asks about, we're asking about are costs, 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 costs. Obviously, I believe there'll be added costs for the parking plan for the north side of Main Street. We're going to pretty much use the parking plan with a little, with a mixture for Canal Drive, which should work pretty well. And it's already, already been funded, basically. But Main Street, it's going to cost us a little more money, obviously, I think, to do this, but I think we're going to get as fantastic. And the cost is one very important reason, cost of this whole parking plan is one very important reason why we want Phase 1 to begin, like Lisa talked about, on April 1st. You know, this will assure that money will be coming into the general fund to defray their ongoing expenses for parking. And, but all that money's just going to funnel into these expenses and we'll see how that's going to go. But that's the goal. It will happen. It will happen. A lot of people ask me that question, how are you paying for this? And we've, we've said it loud and clear and we stick with it strongly. Now, we have much more information to come, much more information to come. Please, questions, email me. I invite anybody to do that. We have an email address called publiccomments@sunsetbeachnc.gov. If you have any general, put them there. We all see that. And I take a lot of the parking stuff and other people, other councilmen take other projects that are going on. You can certainly email Charlie at any time, Lisa on her Thursdays, talk to Peter when he's here on Fridays, he won't be here this Friday, but when he's here on Fridays after council meetings. Lot of opportunity to ask questions. Lot of rumors always going around. And that's, that's, that's the way it is. That's the way it is. And we, I accept that, but you have plenty of people to reach out to. And so we ask you to work and, and, and never hesitate to pick up the phone or email us and say, is this true or is this not true? Go find out. Yes, sir.
Now, we've got some changes because of the ribbon and the stone and the survey. When will you be able to share with all of us the cost for A, B, and C? So we could have a better idea where we're heading with this.
Yeah.
Because without the expenses, revenue, we don't know where we're going to be.
Yeah. Well, you got to know the expenses, obviously. We know where the revenue is going to come from, but we got to know the expenses. And they're being worked on right now. The engineers are working on those things. And what we'll hear is a preliminary number first. That's where they always deal with it. You're going to hear a preliminary number, somewhere between this and this they're looking at. And then as you get closer, that number's refined. That number will be refined as the time gets closer, as the project begins. And that's, that's very normal with any project that you see NCDOT do and be a part of. So we will, we're just as interested as everybody here on that. And so you're going to hear when we hear, I'll guarantee that. Whoa, 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 whoa. Just, just listen. I just explained how they do business, how they told me they do business and how we are going to get, first we'll get an estimate. And then what we're going to do, they're going to do a little experimental section. And I know that. I'm not sure exactly where that's going to be at this time, but they're going to take a little section to experiment. That will tell us that what that costs to do, you just multiply it and that will give us a great indication. Parking lot? No, we can't, we can't talk like this.
Yeah.
Come on up.
We ain't supposed to be.
Come on up after, if you want to come on up after the meeting, give me a call.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. That's good.
Thanks. No problem.
That's good. So that's where we are right now. Moving forward, we're, we're going to update the, we'll give you another update, obviously, next month, but during the month, we'll update you on the website as things are going. And we'll see, you know, how things move and hopefully we're, we're in good shape to open the season. And probably May, May 1st is not a bad point. Yes, sir.
Could you clarify in broad terms where Canal Drive is going to fit in? That's a town road. Okay. So it has different rules and considerations, and we were talking about curb stops that would go in and, and different space requirements. Once, because of the nature of that road and the fact that the center of the road is not the center of the whole right of way for the road. One side can handle parking and one side really can't handle parking. So are we going to try to get that resolved before the 1st of April or say before, before the beginning of the season?
Before the beginning of the season. We're working on, we're starting to work on that. Now we're meeting with homeowners. We're designating, we're looking at driveways because with this one now, we're going to mark driveways, but we may not mark them with curb stops depending now. We're, we're, we're working on this because what we, what we were told by the engineers was, as you go down Main Street and you get to the end, the east end, and come around the canal, kind of the south side of canal, which will be parking, you want to be consistent or somewhat consistent so that people don't go into another area that's completely different kind of parking. You want to keep parking the same throughout your streets there, especially streets that are connected. So we're looking at that now. Now, what John said is absolutely a fact. I don't know if people, there's some people, obviously from Canal here. The middle of the road is not the middle of the right of way. And it is, it is, it's unbelievable, it's a 40-foot wide road and with a 20-foot, it's a 20-foot wide road with two 10-foot right of ways. Would you say that'd be great for parking, two 10-foots because you need nine foot for parking? That would be wonderful. But the middle of that road is not the middle of the right of way. And one side of the road, which we call, we call the north side, does not handle parking. There's not enough room in the right of way to handle parking. We actually went down there and mapped it. And we picked up, we were able to, we were able to pick out 20, and Peter did a great job here, pick out 25 possible parking places on that whole lane. And so we were going to go with what the committee decided and not have parking on Main Street, obviously for this year, and, and probably wouldn't be able to delegate it in the future, we don't think. We don't think. But that's, that's all up in the air right now. But we're meeting with the people on Main Street. We're working through right of ways, we're, right of ways, we're working through, working through the paid parking system and everything else with them. So I think that might have answered your question, John.
Yes.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
All of it from that one now?
Yes.
You good to go on that?
Yes.
10-3, Ordinance Amendment, Chapter 72, Parking. Guys from Hargraves, you got this again evidently.
Were you going to say anything on this one? No? Okay. Lisa, do you want to say something? No? You want me to talk again? What we have to do is in order to, and this is what we delayed from last meeting because we didn't know where parking would stand because we hadn't met with NCDOT yet. So these are the same ordinances we wanted to bring on from before. You see, and there's some changes on the ones we received. But anyway, there's one that deals with public parking on island streets, designated parking within curb stops and/or stone and concrete ribbon, paid parking and one-hour free business parking. So that's all, parts of the parking plan. And, and so I would make a, a motion, I guess, to approve the ordinance amendments in Chapter 72 regarding parking regulations.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I think there should be a little bit. One of them, just to clarify some of these things.
Okay.
One of the parking, 7206, parking on island streets, is all public parking will be designated or delineated. And it will be illegal to park a vehicle in an area not designated for parking. So if you're parking on a road, you're parking in a right of way, you know, it's not legal The, the ordinance designates that these, these parking spots will be marked with curb stops and/or stone and concrete ribbon. The length not to exceed 22 feet. So that addresses one of the questions that came out here. And there could be some different colored curb stops to designate there. There's also going to be, as we said, all public parking is, is paid parking. That includes down in the gazebo area and in the streetscape area. And there will also be one-hour parking, business parking designated in front of the businesses along the streetscape so that the businesses will be taken care of and signs will be installed for that. And with that, just to be clear, there's a special ordinance that says there is one-hour free business parking. And, and. And and people will be ticketed for violating, for parking in a business and then going to the beach, that type of abuse. So that's what the three, that's what the ordinances say.
Yeah. And we, another group that we've really worked with is our, is our business people, to try to make, the, the goal is, you don't want to hurt their business no matter what you do. You want to make it better, if you can. I've been with Holden Beach and Oak Island, and how their businesses do when they started the paid parking and all that. So we're trying to do some of the same things, and we're going to put some free parking for patrons, that, so that they can go shop at the, at the various places on our business section on the island. And we're going to make it possible for their employees to park without paying to park, and which they shouldn't have to do either. So thank you. That's it.
Hey, before you, before you, let me ask you one question on this, because this come to me, I forgot about it, it had been asked by, what are you going to do in regards to when people have, you know, construction going on with their home, say they have damage or whatever? What are you going to do with your construction deals? How you going, how you going to manage that parking?
What, what Auto Connect does is, when there's construction of a new home, or, or you're updating your home or something like that, they, I don't know, did they receive? Why don't you, you could say that. Come on up, Jim. I think, I know how they do it elsewhere, but.
Your pleasure, I was glad to help you out.
Okay.
Construction work going on, that is active construction, we do not ticket them if they are parked in the right-of-way at the property that they're working on. It has to follow all of the other rules. Can't be on the street, can't be on the sidewalk. Has to have signs on the vehicle so that we can clearly identify them. They cannot park overnight. So it has to be during the day, active construction going on. And if we see something else going on, we'll stop and talk to them and get them to move their vehicle or turn their vehicle around so they're parked in the, the right way. That is a very common statewide kind of activity for parking.
And will our planning, our inspection department be aware of all these rules so that when they issue a permit for construction or whatever?
That's up to the town staff.
Yes. Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, we got a motion and a second. If there's no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, next up, we'll be going to the new business, UDO text amendment, Section 49C5, block length. Mr. Satterfield, you got anything to add to this before they go through this?
Just two real minor things. One is, I failed to mention, the planning board voted 4-0 to recommend approval. And the other is that you do need a consistency statement.
That's the wrong one, sorry.
The town council hereby approves the proposed amendment to the United.
That's the wrong one, sorry.
The town council hereby approves the proposed amendment to the United Development Ordinance and finds that it is neither consistent nor inconsistent with the town's comprehensive plan for 2017 Town of Sunset Beach land use plan, as there are no specific policies pertaining to block lengths, and two, that it is in the public interest.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, will be the UDO text amendment, Section 73, definition of model homes. Anything to add to this, Mr. Satterfield?
The same. The planning board did recommend approval, and you also will need a consistency statement whether you vote to approve or deny.
Most pleasure, Council, in regards to this.
Want me to make a motion again? I move that we approve the text amendment that include in, in the motion, the consistency statement that amends Section 3.5, Table 3.1, oh boy, Table of Uses to Cause the Standards for Model Home Units to be Consistent with the Standards for Temporary Real Estate Office. Correct code and rec, code references in the temporary use section. Add definition for model home unit and amend the definition of a temporary real estate office. And the town council hereby approves the proposed amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance and finds that it is neither, one, consistent nor inconsistent with the town's comprehensive plan of 2017 Town of Sunset Beach land use plan, as there are no specific policies pertaining to the model homes or temporary real estate offices, and two, that it is in the public interest.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, public hearing consideration, UDO text amendments, legislative updates. Mr. Satterfield?
Thank you, Mayor. The item here before you is, staff and the planning board is requesting and recommending that you schedule a public hearing for this at your April 7th meeting. This particular amendment is related to three North Carolina session laws that were passed in their, in the 2024 session. Our town code needs to be consistent with those requirements. And even if it's not, Mayor and council members, we have to, we have to abide by what the town, to what the state law says. Planning board has, has reviewed this and recommended approval, and I was requesting that you schedule a public hearing for your April 7th meeting. I can go in a little bit more detail at that meeting.
I'd like to make a motion. Go ahead, sir.
I make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for April 7th, 2025, to hear comments for or against the proposed amendments.
All right. Do I have a second? Second. All right, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on next, also a public hearing consideration, UDO text amendments on filling and grading. Go ahead, Mr. Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. This particular item, again, is being moved from your planning board to you for consideration to hold a public hearing at your April 7th meeting. This, this particular amendment would change the filling and grading requirements on the mainland only, not on the island, but on the mainland. Currently, there's one provision for properties on the mainland to use, and that particular provision assumes that both properties, adjacent to each property are developed. And I've worked with one of the planning board members, who was an engineer, to come up with the legislation being proposed. Planning board has recommended approval, and again, we're requesting a public hearing at your April 7th meeting.
Pleasure, Council.
I'll make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for April 7th, 2025, to hear comments for or against the proposed UDO text amendment on filling and grading.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, tree board appointments. Most pleasure, Council, in regards to the reps to come out on this. What'd y'all decide?
John, you want to handle that?
Sure. One of the requirements for the town to be a, obtain the Tree City designation, which we've been working on for a while, is that we have a, a board. And so that's been discussed and approved to set up a board. And with that, it has to have five members. We had five applicants interviewed, Steve Heinz, Steve Levine, Candace Seben, Rebecca Spock, and Susan Willetts. And I'd like to make a motion that these five be appointed to the Tree City Board.
I'll second that.
Second. All right, any more discussion? All in favor of this?
Aye.
Next up, I'm sorry. Next up is our 2025 audit contact. Ms. Anglin, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
Contract, not contract.
This is our annual contract with the auditor to perform our audit for a amount not to
How does this compare with the, the last audits we had and cost?
I think it's the same.
Same. And it's the same firm?
And it's the same firm.
And this is required by the local government commission?
Yes, sir.
To do this? So no options.
Most pleasure, Council.
Make a motion?
Go ahead.
Make a motion that the council approved the contract with Preston Douglas and Associates, LLP, totaling $26,750.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, 28th through 30th Street Stormwater Pro, Stormwater Project. Ms. Anglin?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a stormwater project that is included in your stormwater plan. We've been working on this one a couple of years. The major holdup was getting easement deeds for the easement between the properties on 27, 28, 29. This actually starts at 27th Street and goes down to 29th, and then down to North Shore and over to 30th, and then out the easement there. So this is in your plan, it's just now come to fruition. We had one contractor bid on it, it's JP Russ and Sons, $293,393. I just need a motion to move the stormwater plan forward.
With only one contractor, did we have to go out a second time?
No, sir. It's not, it's under $500,000.
Okay. And, and is this money part of the stormwater budget that we've been working on for the last several years?
This, this is in your CIP, but we did not budget, as we did not know that this project would come to fruition. Another project that will come to you that we will talk about and budget is Catchment 7, which is the four, five, six, down to Canal, over to Canal A project, that we will go out for bids in July, bring it to you in August, and hopefully, it's a fall and winter project to get that stormwater project done.
And this is to help solve the flooding in the street and around those streets that takes place anytime we get even a little bit of rain?
Yes. And that's because the pipe behind second row has failed. And we are bringing the pipe out to Main Street. We have the encroachment agreements in line with DOT, and it has been engineered.
Thank you.
Most pleasure, Council.
I'll make a motion. May I make a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. For the council to award the 28th to 30th Street Stormwater Project bid to JP Russ and Son Incorporated for the total of $293,393.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up is budget amendment, Police Department, Stormwater. Ms. Anglin?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the budget amendment to, to account for the money that you've spent for the stormwater project, and to recognize the money that the police department has brought back into the town through the surplus of, sell a surplus through gov deals, and we just need a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion, we approve the budget amendment.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up, shallow draft navigational dredging assessment.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the final step, if you choose to do so, in the assessment role and the levying of the assessment for the dredging project.
Most pleasure of this, Council.
Question, please.
Yeah, go ahead.
So if, if we approve this, then, then the, the, the assessment for each parcel stands at $77,10.31?
Yes, sir.
So we had a lot of issues about the quality of, well, let me just ask about the, a little bit about the dredging. One of the things, could you clarify, you know, this started out as a maintenance project and then switched to a navigation project? And, and so what did that do?
Due to the grant funding that became available, the council at that point chose to make it a navigation project instead of a maintenance project. In addition, South Chinks and the Bay had never been dredged, so they were not maintenance projects.
Okay. So, so because of that change to navigation, it went from the grant covered initially two-thirds of the project, and then toward the end, three-quarters of the project?
Yes, sir.
And so the assessment is only for the 321 property owners covering the approximately one-quarter to one-third of the cost, which balanced out for all the property owners to be 77.10. So what recourse is there for the complaints that the dredger didn't do a good job? For, for the concern of the docks at low tide are still in the mud? And that there's still navigational issues?
With utilizing grant funds from the state, we had to stay in the public area of all of the bodies of water. We were not allowed to go within 10 feet of docks. In addition, KAMA would not allow us to go within five feet of docks and 10 feet of marsh grass, sorry. In order to go under docks, I am not aware of a grant available for maintenance dredging under docks, which KAMA and the Army Corps consider basically private property, still in public waters, but basically private property. The same as with the oceanfront owners who own to the high-tide mark, their deeds go to the high-tide mark, but it's public trust area.
Did town, did, did town staff go through to identify those areas with the marsh grass or other obstacles that could not be dredged? And take them off of these assessment rules?
Yes, we did. Through the as-built surveys. And the as-built surveys are available.
Are we going to call the dredger back to clean up the, if you call the speed bump? Oh, yeah. That's.
Marine Fisheries would not let us remove that sandbar.
Won't let you.
So we tried to.
It was not, it was not necessary for navigation, so they said.
So you, so, so key factor all the way through this was what KAMA and Marine Fisheries?
And Army Corps of Engineers.
Would let us do in the Corps of Engineers. One of the big problems with the disposal of the spoils turned out to be, we couldn't run pipes in there and run them off and put them on the spoils island, because at that time, the spoils islands were controlled by the Corps of Engineers.
True.
And they got in the way of us being able to use those islands, even though they're now our property?
We could use them, but according to the regulations, you have to remove two-thirds of what you're going to put there. And then, within a year and a half, you have to remove what you removed. So since our, our spoil islands are waterlocked, there's no land access, it made it too costly to move that material off of those islands.
So first, we would have had to dig out the, the area on the spoils islands, barge it over to the mainland, truck it to the landfill, and then pay for moving it to the islands. And, and so the town considered that excessively expensive? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Again, you can, but right now, we can't.
Just want to make a general comment.
There's going to be a vote on this first.
Asking question, John has, and everybody else, about things that we heard tonight. And somebody mentioned that if we look at who's speaking, well, while we're not looking at necessarily people who are speaking, we're writing notes in our pads to refer back when we can, a chance. Okay? So it's not like we're ignoring the speakers at the microphone. I mean, I've got several pages here of notes on what people have said, and I'm trying to, because eventually, we're going to be able to get back to it, and I hate to forget them. Okay? So yes, we listen and we write.
Well, I'm calling for a vote. So what y'all want to do, unless you, you want to wait to... So what y'all want to do, unless you want to wait to see if we even get anything before we go further, go ahead.
The, the question on the proportion of what was dredging, is there a way to go through each of the 21, 321 properties and accurately determine what was dredged? Part of it is not clear. Is it, the dredgers couldn't come any close to, closer than five feet from the docks, the floating docks? And at that point, they then had to use a sloping method, starting there, going down to, to the minus five feet where they were dredging. So you've got whatever that slope was, I don't know what the slope was, but it's probably at least five or 10 feet. So, so from the very beginning, there was no, no dredging up to and underneath the, the docks that was, was possible with this, using the navigation grant. We had checked at the beginning somewhere if the contractor would be willing to work with each individual. And the contractor, if I, if I recall correctly, correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, the contractor basically said, no, they, they would do the navigation contracting according to the contract and not get into individual dredging contracts with individual property owners.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's why my dock and most of your docks are sitting in the mud at low tide, and you have to move off away from it at low tide to get down into the deeper water. What are the big issues that we discussed?
And we can put the pre and the post surveys on the website. We'll have to break it up into sections. It's like 400 pages, but that'll show the footprint of the dredging and the, what it looked like before and what it looked like after.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't done by linear foot. It was done, and that was, decision was made back in 2020, I think, to, to do per property. And the great majority, at, well, at that time, the town did not own Majestic Oak. The, the town did own Sunset Beach, yeah, Sunset Beach Park. There were some properties that fell with more land, more, more footage, and some that fell less. The great majority of the properties fell in within about 49 to 51 feet that went through in there. And, and the cost time methodology of, of measuring each one of those, measuring the whole length of everything was decided by the council at that time that to, one property, you know, be paid by property, not by linear foot.
They won't, their rules won't let you.
You've been letting them speak? Go ahead, let them speak.
I'd much rather them speak. Go ahead, sir. You can speak. Come to the, come to the microphone. Yeah, come on.
If I ever get to selling cars, I'm going to hire this lady. Because I'm going to tell you something, you're missing the point. I don't think people mind paying as much as they want something. You said a while ago, when I seen it, it's supposed to be sloped. There's no slope. The guy's out there with a square bucket, he, he'll go, I got a motocross track down our canal there. We got a motocross track. I mean, there's nobody that would come up there and supervise these guys. Nobody checks behind them. Have they been paid all their money? Has this company been paid?
So, so the, the company, the engineering company, the folks that were monitoring it?
Well, they, they took, y'all, is all I can tell you. Because I'm going to tell you, when you can't get a jet ski in, and I'm, listen, I don't mind paying $10,000 if I can get a boat, we have got nothing for, for $7700. That's pitiful. And if a man tells you he sloped it by the planes that you keep talking about, that is supposed to be sloped. You cannot sit in the middle and slope that without a square bucket. You're going to have to have a V bucket. They did nothing that they said they were going to do, and you've paid them all this money. Shame on you. Shame on whoever paid them. But I'm telling you, I don't think, what I've heard that anybody would mind paying for it if they got what they paid for. But you can't navigate because there's a sandbar and they won't let you take it out? Was it there before? I mean, my goodness. Is that the leadership? I mean, I moved down, I've been here, I was at Ocean, all I heard was Sunset was the greatest place to be. I come down here. So, I mean, but I'm telling you, I don't mind paying as long as I got, get what I'm paying for, but not a motocross track coming down there. I mean, it's dangerous. I mean, you can't even, you can't even get a two-man boat out there. That gentleman right there is at the end. I'm surprised he ain't up here.
I don't have more questions.
Well, it's y'all's pleasure. Y'all going to do? Y'all going to make a motion? Are you going to table it and discuss it some more and bring it back in the future or see what you're going to do? What's y'all's decision?
I think we should table.
What can we come back with? No, it's.
Yeah, please, if you will, please. Just let them.
Yeah.
It's a good question. Good question. If, if we, and you, if we've tabled it, what would we look at for a month? Is there something to study or is there, can we complain to somebody?
Yeah.
You can look at the as-built surveys.
Okay.
And we could talk to the engineers.
And then what recourse would they have?
I don't know. We need to go into those conversations before I be able to state in public what would be happening, if anything.
And for the KAMA and Wildlife to take care of the speed bump out there in Jinks Creek? Same thing?
I hope to talk to them as well.
Let's give that a shot.
215 people, something like that. I mean, we got to take a look and see if there's anything we can do.
I'd go with that. I'll, I'll make a motion to table it.
Table?
To look into the concerns and to the best, best of our ability, the best of our ability to look into concerns, get with our engineers, and see what happens.
Yeah.
See what they say. It's all we can do.
So the concerns being?
What?
For workmanship.
I don't, aren't there people during this dredging that sort of watched over it?
Yeah, Moffett and Nickel.
Moffett and Nickel, okay.
Yeah, there's a contract line in there for Moffett and Nickel to do that. And Moffett and Nickel come back to us and said, it has been done to standards.
Okay.
We see the standard.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's, the standards are out there. Yeah, you can see that. I mean, that's.
Do any of the ABC groups, any of the ABC, what I mean by ABC groups, we, we deal with KAMA, we deal with it, there's a bunch of them. Do they, do they go, did they, were they there at the end to look at how it went and all that kind of stuff, or they just go along with our engineering?
They, they, they don't really care how, that's the wrong word. I mean, they're not responsible for how it was done. They tell us the standards, the company has to provide those standards, and, and we go through that. They tell us where we can dredge, where we cannot dredge. They hold us to that. Did we have any stop works on this project? We had it down there at the end of, end of the bay. We had it down in one of the feeder canals.
We had it at the end of the bay.
Yeah. We had stop, didn't you have a stop work in the feeder canal because it was dug too deep?
I don't remember the feeder.
That was a week or so that they all just sat there, did nothing, until that got resolved.
You're pulling from memory at, over a year ago at 10 o'clock at night. I'm sorry.
I'll support table in it for a week, for a month.
That's the consensus of the council, so it'll be tabled.
Yeah.
We don't, he made a motion, but we don't need to finish that motion out, do we? I mean, it's just a table.
It's tabled.
So it's taped. Are y'all going to read? Well, we do that, we talk about that when we get the disposition records. All right. Moving on now, disposition of directives. 4-7, we got the public hearing UDO for the legislation part, 4-7, public hearing UDO for the filling and grading. Are y'all wanting to revisit this on 4-7? Do you want to put it in right now, tentatively? And then we can switch it up if you need to.
Yeah, put it in for.
Put that in for the 4-7 meeting?
Put it in for 4-7.
Okay. Anything else that needs to be put on disposition of directives?
Not tonight, no.
All right.
We, we had two public hearings we did, didn't we?
Yeah, that's what I just done. Of course, the other legislative and filling and grading.
Then we have the one on Block Lake.
It's not a public hearing, man. We done done that one. That's the one we voted on tonight, or y'all voted on tonight.
I got approved.
Yeah. All right. Moving on next, public comments. Does anybody, go, go ahead, sir. Let me get the, let me get, let me get, let me get the timer started.
So I just.
Go ahead, sir.
I got to read a little of my pen here, please.
I got a cynical comment here.
Say, say your name and all four.
Joe Camp, 708 Riverside Drive, cynical comment. Improvements made to 28th Street Stormwater Project, right? Are only the homeowners on that street paying for that? Or are we all paying for that? Right? Canal, not everyone's paying for the canal. Are the benefited parties the homeowners on that street? That's a cynical comment. All right, we had to slow down. I was an attorney, I used to sue people. You guys are setting yourself up for huge, huge risk. Mike, great job, you're not experts. First time someone gets hurt, let me see the study that said, here's how the parking goes. Oh, it was 14 well-meaning, well-intentioned citizens. You're not expert. Case over. You, you're setting us up for big risk and big liabilities at town. I agree with the mayor. We got to slow this, slow this down. Your own testimony, your own pointing out a gap, the gap was what the DOT found, they said, you can't put what you want out on Main Street. You have to do it the right way. That's the town, the state telling us what to do. How many blind spots do you have on what your people, the 14 group, are telling us to do on Sunset Beach's property? How many blind spots do you have? How many things are you not doing right? If you can't, you don't know what you don't know. You're setting us up. You need a study. You're in, you're incurring undue risk and undue liability, which you have a fiduciary responsibility not to do as a council member. The parking lot, has anyone, you want to put it in the middle of the island, right? Have you ever thought about congestion? Ever thought about when it comes 6 o'clock at night? Are we going to have a police officer there managing traffic? When there's an accident, how are people getting off the island? You're just going to stall everybody? If there's an emergency vehicle that needs to come by when that 200 cars are coming out of that parking lot, are you just going to get a, I don't have snowplows here, get a snowplow and clear the road and let the trucks come by? We have to think about this. Are we doing it for convenience? Or are we doing it to be profitable and safe? What's the ROI on the parking lot? How many parking spaces do you need to fill? How many times do you need to fill them before everything you've invested in the initial cost and the maintenance break even? If it's 10 years, you lost. Three years is a profitable, three to one, three years is a profitable ROI. Same thing with your parking lots. Why are we, on Main Street, how can we invest in something that we don't know? This, I guess, is government. How can we invest in something when we don't know what the ROI is or how much it's going to cost? We have, we can't, it's ridiculous. You know, we, we need, your own testimony told us why we need a professional study, because you don't know what the experts know. You do a great job if it's only an opinion, and the things that you don't know are the things that are going to hurt us. We got to go slow. I agree with you, Mayor. You got to do it right. Phase one, you define it, you measure it, you control it, you assess it before you go on to phase two, and you do it slowly, because it sounds like we're, we're being steamrolled and you're just running down the track, and that isn't good for anybody. That's it.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor.
Chris Baumann, 417 40th Street. Exactly what he said.
Katie Bordeaux, 641 Oyster Bay Drive. Many people may be thinking like I am, that council didn't take into account the comments in the public forum regarding the island parking. So my question is, is why did you do that? And the answer is simple, you were required to by law. There are two general statutes. 160A, Chapter 10, dash four is about dredging, and there's another statute, 160A, 81-a, that every meeting you must have a public forum. So we spoke, didn't see much in Mr. Hargrave's presentation that you took into account what we said. Your duty as council members is to listen to us, that that's your main duty. And I, I got to say too, that you all didn't even follow your own rules in the public forum. Mr. Mayor, we appreciate you speaking to us, to, to the council, and you did it the correct way. You did it out here in the public forum. Mr. Corbett, you've always been a gentleman, but tonight you chastised our mayor for standing up for the taxpayers. You all are, need to slow down. Mr. Hargraves, you too spoke out of line, and when you spoke, boy, you spoke more than three minutes. I mean, you spoke for a long time, and the next time I get up to speak, I, I want more time too. I just appreciate your comments at the end about dredging. Please don't give these people false hope. Tonight, we had lots of folks that spoke, they were very heated. Please don't just table it and come back. I know somebody's got to pay for it, but don't give them false hope, just because you didn't want somebody to chastise you out in the parking lot. I would like to know what the costs are. I keep asking what the costs are, and you know, we have rules in North Carolina that you all have to approve things. Things came up the last, since the last council meeting. You all have had activity out there, surveying. Who approved that? Who approved it? We, we want to know. Speaking of we, Mr. Hargraves, you keep speaking of we. Who, who are the we that you're talking about? Seems like a lot of work has been done. We, we know the parking committee's done some things, but who, who are the we that you keep speaking about? And Mr. Pozo, I wasn't referring to you. When, when I speak, your pencil's moving. The, the person that I was referring to, I look directly at that person. I stated this in the public forum, sometimes it's best just to leave well enough alone. And you've heard from a lot of folks, I think it's time to go back to the drawing board with it, with the island parking plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ace Carlisle, 1006 West Main. To the council, I don't think any of us believe that you have ill intent with what you're trying to do. So I, I would personally like to say that. I think that you're coming about this from a place of genuine concern. But what's wrong with limiting parking on the island? And why do we feel obligated to accommodate new homes that are being built in Brunswick County that aren't even part of Sunset Beach? You've got the sanctuary, as I understand it, that's 300-plus homes, and the majority of those are in Brunswick County. They're, they're not in Sunset Beach town, but yet we feel compelled to provide those folks a place to park on Main Street, the island, at the sacrifice of the folks that are already living on there and the, the other people that have lived here for years. We talk about taking parking spaces off a numbered streets and moving them to Main Street, isn't not, is not going to increase parking spaces overall, but in actuality, we are increasing parking on Main Street. And then we turn around and we say, we're trying to keep the right of. And then we turn around and we say, we're trying to keep the right of ways clear, so if we need to get them there, need to get to the utilities quickly, we can. But yet we're putting more parking on Main Street in the right of ways. I know for a fact, 1006 West Main sits between 37 and 36. Based on Mr. Larkin's drawings, we are going from one parking space that was between my house and my neighbor to four. Two golf carts and two cars, based on the drawings that Mr. Larkin has put together, that the DOT thinks, oh, great. Okay, I also take exception to the statement that the parking committee members were scared. This was a voluntary committee. They submitted applications. You guys went through a blind review, whatever that means. I don't know. I'd like for someone to explain it. What is a blind review? These committee members, I'm grateful for the time they gave. I would have loved to have been a part of it. Shame on me. But I don't know that I would have been selected in the blind review. But they should have known, when they submitted their name, to be considered what they were biting off. So to be scared, I'm sorry, I'm not buying it. So again, I just ask us to back up, take our time, take a breath, reevaluate, and look at everything that needs to be thought about. And I say, please, please pay somebody to do a comprehensive parking study. Thank you very much.
Ed Huggins, 431 Sixth Street. Thank y'all for, for looking again at the dredging, and I would encourage you to come at where the dredging ended. Canal A, and I think you'll find that it didn't quite meet the standards. The restrictions, yes, but the standards, no. Five feet from, from the dock, they didn't come close. 10, 10 feet, they stayed away there, but right down the middle, I think they did their job. But thank y'all for coming back and looking at it.
Ron Smith, 411 Sixth Street. Just one final note, as I mentioned earlier. I think everyone mostly will agree that to a large degree, the dredging project failed the property owners. And I asked you not to put that burden on the property owners. You made a point that they would not dredge public land around the docks. They would only dress, I mean, they would not dredge private land around the docks. They would only dress, dredge the public. So why is the town covering this fee? Why are the property owners paying when they didn't get their area dredged? There, it's not, we have to dredge the property owners or charge property owners. There are other options.
Jeff Harper, 426 40th Street. Mr. Hargraves, you spent a lot of time, which was helpful, explaining all this procedure that you're going through to take Main Street. My impression is to take all the parking off of it so that they can prepare the construction for the permanent parking. Is that correct? Isn't that what's, what you've said? So we're getting mixed signals. So is the plan that is been circulated and like, for example, that impact us at the end of 40th Street? It seems like that's a done deal, and you're just getting, you're getting ready to do the construction on it. And is that the case?
Yes, in phase one.
Okay, so we're asking you to stop and don't just roll forward like a steamroller, because this is unfair, it's unjust. You guys did not contact us. You did, you, it was, stuff was hard to get to. You should have sent a mailed version of each person's lot and the impact on that lot to them. Did y'all do that? Because we didn't get one. And, and we have severe impacts, sir. We, if you put 14 spaces, they're right under our windows. Right under our windows, not to mention all the safety concerns we already talked about. Where little kids are gonna be running around, more and more and more of them, because they're attracted to the beautiful park down there now. And you're gonna have cars backing out instead of pulling out where they can see over the shoulder or see ahead. They're gonna be backing out in the rearview mirror. Big time risk. And I just don't get it. You guys just seem hell bent to get this done. And you know, we haven't had this problem. This has come up, and it's like, most people have been reasonable over the years since we've been there, and you want to steamroll it. And, and I say, stop. Back to the, one more point, back to the idea of a, of a transit vehicle or buses coming over? That kind of thing naturally balances itself. People naturally know when the beach gets full, that nobody else is gonna go up there because they don't want to go onto a full beach. That's, is a good solution. I think you need to reopen that because it would solve a lot of these problems we're talking about. And, and put the, this steamroll, phase one on hold, because everybody here is a concerned citizen that has a lot of money, a lot of time, years invested in this island. And you're just gonna say, no, we're gonna go ahead and go with it. That just seems like the way it's going. And I say this with all due respect, because you guys are hardworking people and you put so much into it. I could never do that, what y'all do. But you know, hear the people and stop. Don't just go, yeah, 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 and then keep going with something that, that the people are opposed to. We beg you to, please hear us, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna tack on very quickly. When you made the resolution, you asked, I'm sorry, Nancy, 1405 Main Street. You asked the question, did this extend to the end, the west end of Main Street, which the answer was yes. So I assumed when you passed the resolution, there would be no parking moving forward temporarily on Main Street. Now you're saying that's not true, that it does not include from 40th Street to the end, where you're planning to put the parallel spots. So
No, that's gonna be temporary, no parking also.
Okay.
40, 40th Street to the end is town property, not, is a town road. Okay, thank you. That's town property.
I know, that's why he asked for the clarification.
Okay.
But the clarification is not correct, is what I'm hearing, that you are planning on moving forward. So for someone who currently can't get mail delivered, has a hard time with vehicles in there, turning around, has serious concerns about the accessibility of fire, rescue. I think it would be helpful for me to get some assurances in writing as to the safety issues with those public safety amenities that we need, probably for my insurance and some other things. Because no one at that end of the street that's directly impacted by this has ever been notified. Thank you.
So Mark Farrell, 1404 Canal, I'd kind of tack on, these folks were just saying, so what was the point then of the letter that just came out where you were soliciting our feedback? Due by February 28th, if phase one's already in motion? That letter was a lie. That's a bold lie. You didn't listen to any of it. You're just like, phase one, suck it up. Yeah, I heard you. Oh, it's all nice. We're moving forward. What was the point of the letter?
It had nothing to do with phase one.
You just told me, as an affected owner on the south side of Canal Drive, that I had until February 28th to make a public comment. I wrote you a letter. And then now you just told me tonight, phase one is full speed ahead. That's completely contradictory. You didn't take my input at all.
We haven't met with you yet. We will. We will.
And do, and do what? You're gonna walk in and tell me what you want to do, not what I want.
I said it, it's not part of phase one.
Phase one, as described in the meeting agenda, says Canal Drive. It says Canal Drive, it says Main Street, it says, right, phase one, right?
At, at Main Street, there are three spots. There are three parking spots at the end of Canal Drive and Main Street. Yes, there's three parking spots there.
All right, so we're, we're just addressing those. So now you're gonna, so I'm part of the, the next phase where you're gonna come in and talk to me. I apologize for my misunderstanding, but still, it seems like we're, we're going too fast. That's all I gotta say.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. There's nobody in the back, correct?
Is anybody left?
Anyone else?
Yes.
All right, if there's nobody else, does any member of camp have anything else?
No.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion open.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.